About her.
Yeah, yeah.
It has really.
Congratulations, they're in order.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you're very pleased.
The time being six thirty-one, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Kalina Graham, would you do roll call, please?
Uh, yes. Peter Burnett.
Here.
Alternate Brett Bellevue.
Correct.
Charlie Sinclair.
Here.
David Bowns.
Here.
Claudia Marsha say.
Here.
Edwin Bonas.
Here.
Gail Denial.
Here.
And Chair Bill Catardo.
Okay, and with us also tonight is Dean Tefrin and Brian Loughlin, and Brandy Loughlin, that is. And so that's who'll be in attendance, and I'd like to welcome the new people to the board.
Thank you.
And what I'd like to do, and there is a quorum, so we don't need any. So what I'd like to do is rearrange the agenda a little bit. And I'd like to bring forward to the top of the agenda is the election of officers. And at this time, what I'd like to announce, that I will step down from chair and participate as a board member. And as I understand it, that we have someone that would like to chair the board, and I support him fully, and that's Peter Burnett. So at this point in time, I would ask for a nomination for him for the board.
So moved.
So move, any second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was a vote?
Well, you got it.
As for nomination.
This is a nomination, dear.
Okay, I'll second.
Charlie.
Okay, now can we have a vote on the members of the board? So, go ahead.
I just have a question.
Yes.
So we're doing nominations for all positions tonight, correct or not?
Nominations were done last month.
We're voting on them all tonight?
And then we have a new participant.
Okay.
On the board.
Okay.
So.
Sorry.
And he would be nominated, I would think, the sequence of it would be nomination, then election.
Just welcoming back to the planet, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, alright. Thank you.
Alright, so can we have a vote on Peter Burnett as far, well, we have a slate, we have Peter Burnett, we have Edwin, and we have Michael. So do we, which will, do you want to vote it as a block, or do you want to vote it individually?
That's what I was curious about, so we have a slate, like?
Do you want to do a slate show?
We can. Vote that way.
I have a question, so the slate is the same as it was the last meeting with the exception of the chair?
That's correct, yes.
So Mr. Bonas would be vice chair, and?
Michael.
Mike Delvickia.
Rebecca.
Michael will be the vice chair.
Mike Delvickia would be the secretary.
Yes.
The secretary, yes.
Thank you.
So, do we have a, yes?
And per your rules, the new elected officers will not take office until the July meeting. Okay?
I thought it would be tonight.
No, July meeting.
July, we're still in June, dear.
Well, I was hoping it was tonight, Peter, and that way they're.
I bet you were.
So, that being it, so do we have a vote on that?
Do you want to say something else, Dan?
I, I guess if you, if you are, if your desire is to step down as chair, then, tonight, then the new chairman could take over tonight as well.
That's my desire, yes.
Alright.
We would need a motion, I'm assuming.
So, I don't know, have we moved the slate, I moved the slate.
Okay, go right ahead. I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
If the vote on the slate.
Welcome to the seat.
Condolences.
It's a done deal.
Gee, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. And by the way, Peter brings a lot of experience to the board, Peter and I served many years ago on this board. And so I think that we're moving on in a positive direction. And I know he has a legal background also, so he knows where the fisher cut bait, so to speak, is, and all that lies. So, again, good luck, thank you, and just slip right up here.
Come have a seat.
And have a seat.
Okay, grab your coffee and move. Yes, I get coffee and tablets and.
Can I borrow a pen? Please.
Yeah, he's chee-chee.
Yeah. Trying to help out. Oh yeah, give him that, please.
Congrats, you're welcome, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you.
Kalina?
Chee-chee.
Name tag.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Give me a second here. Get this set up. Just right. And there, yeah, thank you. We're something like that, starting out well. Well, good evening, everyone. Kind of thought this was gonna wait until July, but apparently not. We've done the roll call, you took things out of order, so the next item is the acceptance of minutes from previous meetings. Did I entertain a motion for that?
You don't need a motion. You don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion?
Nope, we can just accept them if nobody objects.
Yep.
Is there any objections to the acceptance of the minutes from the May eighth meeting?
Nope.
Alright, no, there being no objection, then the minutes are accepted as submitted. Do we have any presentations tonight?
Nope.
No presentations, alright, extensions? Alright, so I guess that brings us to continued public hearings. It's my understanding that there's a, there's a couple here that were discussed at the last meeting, and they've been brought forward. That would be the Pogus Woods and Langley Cove applications. I'm gonna take my glasses off to read all this stuff. Both, as I'm told, have been accepted, and they were continued from March. So this is the public hearing?
It's con- yep.
Alright, so in that case, then, I would clear the public hearing open at six thirty-nine PM. Again, this is for PL twenty fifteen oh one four two SP, White Oaks Road, Pogus Wood Development, and PL twenty eleven zero zero two four SP, and several other related applications, that's the Langley Cove development, proposal for two hundred and ninety-one unit development and boundary line adjustment. Is there any members of the public that wish to come forward and speak?
Yes, sir.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm John Rokee, the civil engineer for the project.
I remember you, hi, John, how are you?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I remember you from years ago, too.
Ten or more years ago, so I hope that everyone would be patient with me this evening.
Good evening, basically, since the, since the last meeting, one of the big items that came up was we were discussing the gate between the two projects. We have since, since decided to go forward with that. We have, we had our traffic engineer take a look at everything that was discussed at the last meeting, including, including everything with the turns onto Weers Boulevard, and has assured, assured us, and gone through everything with DPW and planning staff, to assure everyone that, that all the traffic works by using just the single entrances. We came up with a twenty-foot gate, we went back and forth on some of the sizes with the planning staff, and we have settled on a twenty-foot gate in between the two projects. That was, that was basically one of the last items that was outstanding, I think all the, all the condominium stuff has worked out, the condominium documents have worked out, the water, I think the water documents are pretty well worked out at this point. All the outstanding, any of the outstanding items have been taken care of at this point, so.
Okay, and you've been working with staff on this?
Yes. Extensively.
And my question is that the boundary line adjustment has to do with the elimination of a lot in order to create the road, is that what that is?
No, what it, what the boundary line adjustment does, the bulk of the boundary line adjustment, is that the, there used to be a link, the Langley Park Trailer, Trailer Park, and the single-family home that is five fifty-three Weers Boulevard owns the bulk of the acreage. So that's gonna go down to basically a ten thousand square foot lot on Weers Boulevard, like all the others, and that acreage all gets combined together with, to make the project.
Okay.
Then there's a, then there's a secondary boundary, boundary line adjustment that we've been working on with one of the internal butters, just to make sure that they have, that was another item that came up at the last meeting. The pins that were set for the project, for their parcel, weren't adding up to the full sixteen thousand square feet that was on their deed. So we're adjusting things around, we're, I, I've been working with them on setting, setting a boundary that gives them the sixteen thousand square feet, keeps, keeps everything straight with the easements that we needed for the new roadway, and I think takes care of everything.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rokee. Anybody from the public wish to speak on?
I have a question.
Either of these, oh, I'm sorry, any question from Counselor Bowns? Forgive me, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I didn't review the minutes, and I didn't go to YouTube, and look at all you guys. So tell me where this gate is, and what was the purpose of it?
The gate is right at the boundary line between Pogus Woods and Langley Cove. So there will be no throughway between the two projects, there won't be any cross-traffic unless there's an emergency, that's it.
So it'll be just, just, just an emergency exit?
Emergency access for both projects. If there's an emergency in Pogus.
All the internal traffic is gonna come from Weers Boulevard then, right?
Yep, all Langley Cove traffic goes to Weers Boulevard, all, all Pogus Woods traffic goes to White Oaks Road.
Well, that's interesting, thank you, now I understand.
Quick question.
Yes.
Does that still allow for you to complete Pogus Woods?
Yep, it does.
Okay.
Yep, Pogus Woods, Pogus Woods can be, the last phase can be completed with the gated access to Langley, yep.
So you folks are on board with this, and does this meet the two entrances or two exit requirements in order to continue develop Pogus Woods?
It does meet the requirements for both projects, if they, once they get to the fifty or more unit level, they, both projects need a second access, and that, and this would fulfill that requirement. The fact that it's gated has no bearing on, on its applicability, it meets the requirements.
Okay, again, forgive me, because I wasn't here. In what phase of the project will you build the road that goes out to Pogus Woods, and will you build the road through Pogus Woods to White Oaks Road?
Nope, that all goes away.
That all goes away?
The, it, the, the, the access, the connection will be made at Phase Two, but basically, once, once the road is put in and all the utilities are connected up that are common with Pogus Woods, the gate gets put up, and that's it.
And that's it?
Yep.
So are you?
So there's no traffic that will ever go through Pogus, unless there's some emergency that need, that the gate needs to be opened by the police, or something like that.
Wow. And you're all good with that?
Yes, we're, we're fine with the concept, I mean, from a, from a staff standpoint, whether there's a gate there, or whether there's through-traffic, meets the requirements and, and works either way.
Okay.
There are, there are issues that the board needs to decide as to whether you feel that meets. Let me back up a little bit, the board has expressed concern over the past several months about the traffic going through Pogus Woods. So it's board's decision, going to be the board's decision as to whether you believe this alleviates that, your concern or not, that, that's not for the staff to decide. But from a standpoint of the technical aspect of, the access meets the requirements for both projects, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I, you know, as I've stated, you know, I'm comfortable, I'm happy about the gate, I'm just worried about down the road.
With all these.
No pun intended. With all these units get completed, and hopefully they will be. If that ex, if that exit off, or means of egress, egress just on Weers Boulevard is gonna be, is gonna work out, is it gonna be enough? I just, I just wanna go on record as saying I have, still have concerns about that. I think, I think the gate idea definitely will help the people up at Pogus Woods, you know, alleviate their fears of having a throughway through their neighborhood, which I agree with, but I am still concerned about the.
So since the last meeting, we've had two go-arounds with the traffic engineer. We, after the last meeting, we asked for them to do the, update the traffic analysis based on having the gate, which means one hundred percent of the traffic is in and out on, on Weers Boulevard, and that was done. And then DPW reviewed the results of that, and then had a question about the effect on Capri cottages that are right across the street, which wasn't completely addressed in the, in the update, and, and so we went through, the traffic engineer went through it again, and he's come back, and DPW is satisfied with the results, we're satisfied with the results, as expected, the, the intersection that's being constructed by the applicant for Langley Cove will handle the traffic going in and out of the project. This is not to say that there won't occasionally be delays, particularly trying to get out of Langley Cove, which is true of any of the major developments that are along the area, sometimes you wait for traffic, and that's the way it is, but.
That's a fact.
Yeah.
And the engineer that we're using is our engineer, or is that somebody that?
It's their traffic engineer, who has done the traffic analysis, right, he's a registered licensed traffic engineer.
From the Hampshire?
And the, yes, and the, the, the traffic has been third-party reviewed by somebody from the city also, so.
Thank you.
By another traffic engineer.
Mr. Rokee, the Pogus Woods development, where, where's the entrance on Weers Boulevard, is it right there on the cove, on the curve there?
For Langley Cove?
Yeah.
Yes, you know where the sewer pump station is, right as you, like, there's the Langley Brook, it's right as you're going north from Shaw's, it would be right before the bridge and the pump station. It's, it's the same entrance that the trailer park used to use.
So it's the existing curb cuts?
Yep.
And then there's going to be sidewalk?
Yep.
Constructed?
Yep.
Okay. And then the same thing at the, on the, the Pogus Woods development, which is a.
The Pogus Woods development is already, is already constructed.
Okay.
The entrance onto White Oaks Road.
Okay. I guess my only question is for staff, and that is, in reading the the application itself, or the summary, it said, let me, one second here. One of the constraints was that there had to be, in order to continue development of Pogus Woods beyond forty-nine units as planned, and to construct Langley Cove with more than forty-nine, a second entrance is required for both. So my question is, is a gated entrance, you're sure that a gated entrance is within the, the scope of the regulation?
Yes, we, we, the, the second entrance is triggered by the National Fire Code.
Okay.
And the forty-nine unit is the, or the fifty unit actually, is the cutoff. And we already have one or two other developments in the, in the community that have second entrances that are gated, and they meet the requirements.
So it's a fire safety issue?
Yeah, it's primarily for emergency, I mean, if, if for some reason the, the in and out of Langley Cove is blocked by some type of emergency fire, car accident, whatever, then this gate could be opened and traffic could go both ways. And the same would be true if something happened in Pogus Woods, if there's, all of a sudden, you can't get to White Oaks because of something that happened on Sarasota, the lower part of Sarasota, then that gate could be opened and people could go in and out through Langley Cove, so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is there a key master, who, who has the keys to this?
Fire department.
It's, it's controlled by fire, and, I mean, there, there are various systems, and.
I don't think there's an actual.
We're not concerned about what system is installed.
You can't get one, so.
Because the fire department is, is going through no matter what.
But the, so the fire department, the police, and I, and I've seen the.
There are wireless, right.
Work.
Right.
Yeah, no, there's a.
I hope they have a backup there or something like that.
The intention, and I've had this back and forth with the applicant, the intention is, once the decision was made to have a gate, the gate is closed, period.
Right.
There's no up and down or, or anything else, it's closed unless there's an emergency, in which case it's open, and once the emergency situation is over, it's closed again.
So somebody, somebody within the city departments would say, okay, Joe, go up there and unlock the gate, something like that?
Or the fire department will.
Right.
With their bolt cutters, or.
They have the information.
Or they'll have a master key, or, like I said, there are, there are different locking mechanisms. Whatever is decided is, is fine with us.
Nothing can withstand a firefighter with a bolt cutter anyway, so. Are there any other questions from the members of the board? Hearing none, then, once again, a call for the public comments on either of these two applications. Any members of the public, any butters? Hi, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Ted Day, one oh four Sarasota.
Hi, Ted.
I just, concerned about mostly, I think the crash gate, or the gate is a good idea. Obviously, my biggest concern is of some other board sometime decides that it's not a good idea, and votes to open it up. That's our biggest concern right now, but my other concern is the, the road, Palmetto, is it, that you're going to be going down, that's a mess right now. Just like to hear when Brady Sullivan plans to fix that, because that was also part of the discussion last month, and I haven't heard anything about that.
That's an, excuse me, Mr. Day, that's an existing road in the Langley Cove Park, or the Pogus Woods?
No, it's in Pogus Woods, that's going to give access to, straight through the lot that they're creating, taking out so they can put the road through. It's the main access that's going to go to that gate that they're going to put in. But the, the road's a mess, you know, it needs to be leveled up, it's all crushed, you know, and where the sewer is, I guess the town already knows it, I've seen emails on it. So I just wanna know, I heard that they were supposed to be doing it sooner than later, like to hear from them when they plan to do it.
Well, it would occur, occurs to me that if they've gotta construct a section of new road.
And it was also going to be at Langley Cove's expense, if they were going to have access through there, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
I just wanted to hear from them when, if that is in fact the case, and when they plan to do it, if they plan to.
Wouldn't it be likely they would do it at the same time they would construct that new section around?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, well, maybe they, we can get an answer for you, sir, thank you.
Mark Pennard from Brady Sullivan.
Hi, Mark.
So the discussion had been that if there was no gate, the board might make some sort of condition for Langley regarding paving and drainage at Pogus. It's the applicant's opinion that with the gate solution, the Pogus rules will apply to the Pogus roads. And the Pogus approvals provide when those roads get upgraded, it's got to do with when further development occurs over there. So this gate means that Langley is not gonna be using those roads. If the fire department needs to crash through the gate, that's one thing, but Langley people are not gonna be using those roads.
Is the road that he's talking about, is it not, is it not at finished grade?
It's a base coat, because this, it's base coat, because this was planned and approved for the road to be top-coated once further development had occurred, because you don't, there's another.
How many more units, John, in Phase Three?
Forty-five in Phase Three.
So ultimately, there's additional Phase Three units, forty-five or so, the idea initially was when those units got built out, then everything would get a top coat. There's been significant delays for the Pogus build-out for a bunch of reasons. But the city has conditions of Pogus approval that specify when that upgrade occurs. In my mind, Langley no longer has a bearing on that. But in any event, the city has site security in place, there's a bond or letter of credit or something in place to cover that, should the Pogus Declaran not fulfill the requirements as provided for in the, the Pogus approvals.
So what are the conditions that need to be met in order for you to complete that road?
I, I don't have those Pogus conditions, but my recollection of it from way back when this project, Pogus goes back before Brady Sullivan owned it.
I think I was on the board when it was first proposed.
So we inherited those conditions, and we put up site security for those obligations. But again, my understanding is that when the build-out of Phase Three occurs, that's when there's an absolute requirement to do those road upgrades. At this point, with the gate, with Langley not using it, in my mind, it's a non-issue for Langley at this point, because Langley's not gonna be using those roads.
Right.
I thought there was a ten-year requirement from the date of approval, that irrespective of whether you began Phase Three or Phase Two, or whatever it was on Pogus, Pogus Woods, that after ten years, there was a requirement that you finish the roads at Pogus Woods, am I wrong about that?
The ten-year requirement that I recall is the change, the, the control being turned over to the association, so I think it's November of nineteen that control is turned over by the Declaran, but I don't recall a ten-year requirement on the roads. But I haven't looked at that in many years at this point, so I can't really speak to that. But I, I will tell you this, if there's a requirement, it'll be complied with. So whatever those requirements are, we'll, we'll fulfill them. If for some reason they weren't fulfilled, that's what the site security is in place for.
Fair enough, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pennard.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Tom Miller, twenty-seven C S Lane. Just a further thing on Palmetto, Palmetto is a, you know, base coat down there, well, now that base, base coat is basically, it's base, base coat, sub-base, it's shot. There's potholes this big in it, there's rocks all over the road, it has deteriorated tremendously. And it's not even a base coat on it now, basically, it's just cracked up asphalt, it's terrible. And I believe Dean walked the premises with us, and he saw that road, and he can attest to how bad that road is, and the pothole in the middle of the road has gotten bigger. And it grows bigger every day.
How many lots, developed lots are on Palmetto, do you know off the top of your head?
There's either forty-one or forty-two.
So there's.
Oh, I'm sorry, on what, Palmetto?
Yeah.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I believe.
So there's seven families that depend upon this pothole-filled road?
Either this way out, or that way down Palmetto. People from the court down in Sarasota, court down there, come up around and use that.
Okay.
I go that way all the time.
I haven't walked the property, sir, so I don't know, so I may be asking a stupid question. But Mr. Pennard is saying that when you put the gate in, it's gonna relieve the traffic pressure on Palmetto.
We've been driving on that road for, I've been there for six years, and it's deteriorated. It's, it's terrible, I mean, you're talking a section that goes from here across the street, almost, that's all cracked and chunked, and then chunk, 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 the whole side of the road is gone. Talk to Dean about it, he will explain it to you. He can tell you how. He can tell you how this repair is.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Paul Eaton, 537 Wiz Boulevard, and I'm going to butter to the Langley Cove project. Hi, folks, glad to see you again. I just had a couple of questions in regards to your staff proposal. I'm on page four of twelve. If you could all go there, please. It's the project completion deadlines. It's one D. It says that this project will be completed June third of 2020. I'm asking what part of that project will be completed that soon? Is that Phase One?
Mr. Trufeth, and this is a phase development, right?
This is a phase development. Under New Hampshire state law, the planning board can grant a two-year completion period for a project. Traditionally, the board has been granting less than that. And then we have extensions. And so, the two years would be the maximum amount that we could grant for completion at this time, assuming the vote is tonight. I mean, I don't know if we're going to vote tonight or not. But if the vote was tonight, then it would be June third of 2020. And then the applicant would have to request an extension.
The 291 units are by 2020?
No, no. They're going to start their construction, they're going to get, the number of units they get done could be five units, it could be a hundred units. I don't know.
So, the state really doesn't mean much, this is just, all you can give them is two years?
Correct, correct. After that, they would just ask for an extension of the approved plans and continue on.
Okay.
And then when they come forth with extension requests, they'll, they have to update the board as to the status on the progress that they've made on the application, on the approval. Is these, are these, are these city streets, have they been accepted?
No, they're all private.
They're all private.
Speaking of private roads, on behalf of my friends in Pogus Woods back there, in ten years of the nineteenth that Mr. Pennard referred to, are they going to take ownership in ten years and be responsible for all that road cost that's not being done right now? Will they be responsible to get that up from the minuscule base it's got right now up to the top coat? Is that going to be on their shoulders or the developers?
I believe the developer has stated that there is a sufficient bond to ensure completion of those roads should the developer or its successors fail.
Post-nineteen, post the ten years, after the ten years?
Sort of.
When they take control?
I don't know. I leave that up to staff. That's the purpose for which completion bonds are purchased, are put in place.
I'm happy for the folks, it's not going through there. My question is now, all the traffic coming out onto Wiz Boulevard? And is the traffic gentleman here, who is he here tonight? I guess it was reviewed by a third party and all, and the town's okay with the 291 units with one exit, unless there's some emergency. That's the plan, the gate will stay permanent unless it's an emergency, correct?
That is the plan.
It'll all come out on the boulevard.
That is the plan.
Did the traffic people take into account the future bike path and things that are proposed by the town that are going to go through? And they're all good with that?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just a point of order. We're not, we haven't required bonds for many, many years. We can require bonds. A letter saying that they will complete the project might be sufficient. But on the other side of it, if the developer decides he's going to sell the project and move on, that letter is not a commitment to complete that project, or is a bond. A bond is a different type of vehicle, as you know. And if we're talking bonds and, if we're speaking bonds, then we should talk bonds.
I may have misspoken, I thought I heard...
No, you didn't misspoke, I was sort of back for that way.
That completion bonds have been placed.
So, sort of bond?
Another question, the, on Part Two B, it's the nine-one-one unit numbering. Will that include my residents? Because I've been coming up through there since 1953 and they've already, will have access through there. What happens with the nine-nine-one during construction? Does that include my property?
The, as you know, from a staff standpoint, we have been recommending that because your access is going to be off of the new roads constructed, that we recommend for efficiency and emergency response, to avoid confusion, that you get a new address based off of, I forget the name of that street that's coming up there.
The Gashley somewhere.
Yeah, you would, your address would be based off of that street because that's your access point. That's how ambulance or fire or police would get to you.
So, that would be part of that nine-one-one unit?
Yeah, no, it's a matter of timing of when we would do that. But we wouldn't want to do it before the road is in place. But at some point in time, it would be our recommendation that your address would be changed to the new street address.
Do the right thing, folks, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Step up, Peter, how are you?
I'm fine, sir. Good to see you again.
I look, I look younger than you, I realize that. I didn't recognize you originally, but good to see you back. There's an agreement in a court proceeding whereby Mr. Cantaldo recuses himself. I just want to indicate on the record, I don't know if you're aware of that, is that the applicant is not waiving that by the discussion that Mr. Cantaldo is entering into with the board, just on the record.
And I think that he was simply assisting the new chair in understanding the intricacies of the zoning scheme. I understand that he has been recusing himself from proceedings involving Brady Sullivan or involving these two applications. And I expect that would continue for this evening. So, but he's free, as any of the members are, to help me get through this meeting without making too many mistakes. Thank you. All right, any other members of the public or butters wish to come up and be heard regarding these two projects? Any members of the public? Last call. All right, and then I think at this point, if I'm not mistaken, I would close the public hearing at 7:09 PM. I think this would be a good time for us to ask the staff a few more questions. Would it be within the scope of this, these approvals for us to require the developer to upgrade those streets that the residents at Pogus Woods aren't complaining of?
At previous meetings, the direction of the board was for staff to work with the applicant to try to come to an agreement on some type of cost-sharing mechanism for the use of Pogus Woods roads for Langley Cove. With the idea of the gate, which came up at the last minute at the last meeting and we've kind of worked through some of the issues, I have been going on the premise with the board's direction that those were still important items. And while we have worked out the size of the gate and the fact that the gate will be there, we have not worked out any of the other details concerning the gate in terms of long-term maintenance of that access road, whether Palmetto gets paved sooner rather than later, et cetera. So, we have not worked out any of those issues now. You have heard the applicant's statement concerning the status of that. And that's fine if that's what the board wants to accept. But if the board wants me to pursue, still pursue, some type of cost-sharing arrangement or negotiation of whatever, then, then I guess I would need that reaffirmation. And in which case, we're obviously not ready to vote tonight because we need to work those things out. I don't think we should vote tonight anyway because we need to get the agreements about the gate and everything that's related to it into the recommendations and the conditions of approval. But whether those conditions of approval are also going to contain details about cost-sharing or not is up to the board. I'm more than happy to continue to pursue that if that's the direction the board wants to, wants to give me. Or if the fact is the gate satisfies the board and the discussion, then that's fine too. But I'll go either way.
Well, here's, here's the question, I think that the chairman is asking. And I'll put it a different way. I think the gate was, as I understand it, and again, I wasn't here, but from the discussions that I heard, I think the gate was the compromise to address the concerns from those folks at Pogus Woods of what the increased traffic would do, how that would impact Pogus Woods. So, the gate was the compromise. And the compromise was, we're not going to use this as an entrance or an egress. We're just going to use it, we'll just use it as an emergency entrance. So, with that in mind and that, what is the board's ability to keep the gate and ask the applicant to address the road situation in Pogus Woods? Because it doesn't seem to me that the board can do that. But then, of course, I've been wrong. And I've always, whenever I've sat before these hearings, I've always asked the applicant to come up with some kind of a solution that will address Pogus Woods' concerns with respect to the condition of the roads. If the gate is the solution, correct me if I'm wrong, then Pogus Woods stands alone in terms of the roads and what happens there in Pogus Woods. And again, I thought there was a ten-year requirement that they complete the roads. I could be wrong. I've been wrong a lot before and I'll be wrong a lot in the future, so.
I, I think the board can, can require any reasonable condition. Now, the term reasonable is always subject to interpretation. And what the board thinks is reasonable, the applicant may not. And so, I think it would be wise if, if you want staff to continue to pursue the aspects that we're talking about, then we will. And we'll try to come up with a reasonable agreement that the board can memorialize in the, in the approval and make a conditional requirement that something, you know, X, Y, and Z is done. That does not necessarily mean that the applicant is going to agree with that down the road and they're, you know, they have other remedies available to them to, to fight certain conditions, as you are well aware of, i.e. court. So, I mean, I mean, but I think it's best to try to work these things out ahead of time. But the board is, is...
Well, here's my, here's my concern. We're going to have this emergency entrance and exit, okay? And assume we're going to use it for fire trucks or, you know. We want a road that, that is in condition that is not going to endanger anybody and that is passable by, by a fire truck or some other larger vehicle. I mean, that's what we want, isn't it? And that seems like a reasonable requirement in terms of what the conditions of the road are. But I'm not an engineer, I'm not a road guy. I don't know if the, the plan as it stands and the emergency entrance and exits is going to be sufficient to handle what could be required in the future. And, you know, even if I went out there, I wouldn't know the answer to that. I wouldn't know how to answer that. I just don't have that kind of savvy. So...
Mr. Trufeth, and the chair has a question then?
Yeah.
The, the new road that we're talking about, the, the road that ends at a gate at the property line?
Yeah.
It looks like it's about 182 feet of new road. There's nothing there now, right?
Correct.
There's nothing.
Correct.
And it's an extension of Palmetto.
It would, in effect, be like an extension of Palmetto into the Langley Cove property and from the intersection of Siesta to...
Right.
The Langley Cove part of the road that they need to construct, no matter what, is...
Well, so at the very...
Approximately 180 to 250 feet, something like that, yes.
Let me, let me finish, please, David. So, there's about 329, could in this plan, if I'm reading this tiny print, 329 feet of Palmetto Lane now. This is the self-same road that the, the residents were complaining about its condition, correct?
I would say Palmetto is probably...
The worst?
Seven-hundred to 900 feet long. Of the roads in Pogus Woods currently, yes, Palmetto is, is the worst.
Okay, so, so, and you talk about cost-sharing between Langley Cove and Pogus Woods. But isn't that a fiction with a gate there? In other words, what I'm hearing the developer say is because the gate is there, we don't really have to improve Palmetto because there's not going to be any increase in traffic through, right? Essentially, yeah. And I understand that, and that's certainly reasonable. But it seems to me it's also reasonable for the public to expect that if they're going to get the approval, that they would, if for no other reason than to be certain, as Counselor Bowns brought up, that the whole length of Palmetto would be in suitable shape for emergency vehicles to get through. I mean, that gate's not going to be necessary until it's really necessary. And if the potholes and the condition of that road is substandard, I think to me, that would give the board sufficient basis in the interest of public safety to make improvement of Palmetto. It's certainly at least its repair, if not its final grade coat, to make a condition of approval.
Would not disagree with that, but I would, I would, given the discussion by the applicant, I would appreciate direction from the board as to how you want me to pursue this and how far you want me to go with it.
Well, the, both projects are before this board for possible approval this evening. And we are now currently deliberating, I believe. Wouldn't it be possible for this board to conditionally approve the applications provided that staff can work out the details later?
I don't, I, no, I, I think that we would lose all leverage if we did that.
Okay, so then, we could give the developer guidance as to how we would like the plans altered and have the developer come back next month for possible final approval?
Correct.
I'm just asking for help to how to proceed because it may not have occurred to you, but like, I didn't come here expecting to be seated.
No, 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 I understand what you're asking, chairman. And that, that's basically, I mean, I...
I mean, I've considered faking a heart attack just to get out of the meeting.
There's two, there's two ways, there's basically two ways to do this. One is for the board to direct me and staff, how do you want us, how do you want to proceed so that we're ready for the next meeting? The other way is for you to direct the applicant on how you want them to proceed so that we're ready for the next meeting. I mean, it amounts to the same thing, it's just a matter of, of where you want to put the onus on.
So, what I'd like to do then, because I don't want to make that recommendation, I don't want to make any decisions.
Palmetto Lane right here, so at least that portion.
David's educating the body, I think, at this point. I'd like to go around and start... I'd like to go around, starting with the vice chair, Mr. Bonn, and kind of gauge his opinion as to what we should do about the possibility at this point of improving the roads as a condition of approval.
I agree with, I agree with both sides. There's part of me that says, you know, I hate to make the applicant do something that's not part of their application, but I do understand that access. If we're bringing, if at some point we need to get an emergency vehicle out of there or through there, I don't want to endanger those folks either. So I would suggest, my opinion would be that we discuss with the applicant what, how much of Palmetto we can get taken care of.
As I said, it doesn't necessarily have to be a completion, but it certainly, it sounds like repairs are necessary.
Potholes, that sort of thing.
And as far as, and I agree, I understand the pressures that developers are on, and that they they don't want to have expensive conditions put on what's already a huge expense, but we often require developers to make off-site improvements or infrastructure improvements that don't directly benefit the development, like sidewalks and things of that sort, so I think it's well within the scope, you know, and the best practices for us to at least consider that. Mr. St. Clair, do you have an opinion on this topic?
Yes, I do, actually.
Well, I'm not shocked.
I think that the developer should bend over backwards to get the Pogus Wood group smooth, like smooth sailing, and I think you hit it right on the spot when you said that you, that the board has requested developers to do things or required them to do things that don't necessarily impact their development. So like you said, sidewalks and things like that. So I kind of am looking to have all the roads up there brought up to snuff, because if you if you, if you're going to wait until the rest of this stuff is developed, I mean, I know how long that's going to be, and I don't know what, we see how roads deteriorate in this area anyway, under the best conditions. So from my very limited experience driving around up there and looking at the roads, and one of them looks in pretty good shape, but the rest of them don't look good at all. It's like, how long do you expect these people to wait? So I think that would be very fair to say, these need to be brought up to snuff. I truly do.
What percentage of Pogus Woods is built out?
About 40%.
And what's the phasing?
There are, if the application to change this one lot to access road is approved, there would be seven remaining lots in the current phase, and then there would be 42 approximately, give or take two or three in the remaining phase.
Those are lots in Pogus Woods, existing lots right now that haven't sold, right?
Correct.
I'm not a genius at this, but, and I'm certainly not in the real estate business, but wouldn't improving the roads improve the value of those lots and make them more attractive to buyers as a general principle?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Roke is standing. Would you like to be heard, sir?
I said one statement, that it was actually incorrect statement, the 42 lots that are in Phase Three, there's no roads built on that at all. All the construction traffic has to go through to build those roads, so that was it.
So Phase Three doesn't include any improvements or any works, right? Okay. Are there any other members of the board that would like to be heard?
I'd like to weigh in, please.
Certainly.
I think that it, I would like to request that the planning department do due diligence in looking into bringing up the Pogus Woods roads to where an emergency vehicle can safely maneuver. And I think, I would say a good-sized fire truck.
Okay.
If I have to pick something. That would be my recommendation. It's up to the other board members if they feel that that would be a good idea, or they feel there should be more.
I concur with that, but at the same time, you know, I'm going back to making it, I keep hearing these great things about making property more valuable and stuff, but the reality is, is that if they're, if a developer or the owners or however you term it, are saying, well, we're going to do this after all this construction is done and when we've sold the number amount of units, it's like, how long is how long? It's just, it's crazy. And I think that the maybe people don't care about goodwill and stuff like that, I don't know, but it would just seem to me that to at least bring the roads up, fix the drainage and all that stuff, do that would just, it would just it would improve relations. And they've got to be important, I would think. It just, it's like, it's like having a landlord fix something, it makes the tenants happy. And I realize people, if they own their little properties or whatever, I get all that, but still, there was a bill of goods that went with that, and I just think that that would be
And they own the roads, they're, it's private.
Right, and I think that would be most advantageous to the developers.
I think that the Department of DBW could probably look at the drainage.
Yep, they have.
Do they feel there should be more in different spots?
Okay. Was there any intention that these streets would ever become city streets?
No.
No, okay. So.
So, actually, the approval of Langley depends upon the approval of boundary line adjustment for Pogus Woods, right?
Well, the amendment of their site plan for Pogus Woods, yes.
The amendment of the site plan.
Which is why they're in the order that they're in.
So Pogus Woods is involved in this. So I guess I consider them, I consider Pogus Woods any reasonable requirements that we would impose with respect to the amendment to the site plan. Would go hand in hand with whatever other roads were impacted by that, and I would think it would be at least Palmetto. But again, this is not my area of expertise. So I guess I would be standing behind Charlie here in terms of what he would like to see. I don't know if that's possible for us to do in a realistic way. I want to treat the applicant fairly. I don't want to impose restrictions or conditions that we can't enforce. I don't want to be unreasonable about it. But I think it, I think continuing the discussion until next month might bear some fruit, and if it doesn't, then we'll just have to do an up and down on this next month. That's all there is to it. We've got to get this application out of here, you know, it's been around for too long, you know. Not that I don't enjoy seeing all these lovely people, both pro and con, and enjoy the conversation, but we got to get this done. We just got to get it done.
Perhaps we can assist the staff by giving them a consensus recommendation as to what we'd like to see for the next meeting, so that we can vote it up or down at the next meeting.
Well, I think the consensus
So what I'm hearing is, there's some sentiment that all the roads in Pogus Woods need to be improved, or at least brought up to a certain standard. There's also the suggestion that Palmetto, at the very least, which is probably in the worst condition, its entire length need to be done. With the understanding that there's going to be road construction, approximately a length of approximately a third of what's now there would be constructed as new construction. So, have a seat. So I'm not hearing anybody say that we should leave the roads the way they are. So with those, with that direction, do you think perhaps you could give us some options for next month?
Absolutely. I mean, we'll continue to work with the applicant to come to those agreements. I think it's very helpful for the applicant to hear from the various board members of the direction that people are thinking, so, yes, absolutely.
Well, I think that's part of why we have a planning board in the first place, is so these folks have some real voice in the process of these large developments, and this is a large development. It's a lot of units, and by the same token, it would echo the counselor's comments about, you know, they have a right to develop the property without unreasonable constraints and expenses, and we get that. But the orderly development of the city of Laconia is, got to be paramount. And that has to apply to all its residents, even if they don't happen to be on the right street. So is there anything else? Mr. St. Clair, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, you know, I think, again, that seeing the steep slopes and everything that they're going to be putting roads on in the new, in the Langley Cove development, you know, it makes me wonder, what are those roads going to look like? So, so we really need to be sure that these roads in Pogus Woods are all brought up and shown that that can be done, and take it from there. And I just have one other question, if I can.
Sure.
How many units are there in Evergreen? Does anybody know?
Oh, we've had this discussion, or I had this discussion with someone, and there are more than 50, but it was developed prior to the requirement for
No, but how many are there there?
I don't know exactly.
How many?
200 and change.
200 and change, does that sound right?
Sounds a little big.
I would say between 150 and 1
We can pull it up.
And the only reason I'm asking is because of the, that road comes onto the boulevard, and that's the, is that their only way in and out of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, see, that's just clarified my, some of my concerns, so that's good to know.
Can't access the file.
All right, thank you.
But that development was built prior to the national fire code.
No, and I'm not even concerned about that. I'm just thinking about
Traffic-wise.
Traffic-wise, that many people coming out on the boulevard, and it's actually it's maybe a little, maybe about the same, but maybe even a little less of a, what do you call it? Line of sight, thank you.
Right.
So I just was, I've been thinking about this, so I was just curious about that, thank you.
Keep thinking, Josh. All right, is there any
Are we looking for other things to ask the board?
No, I think I'm satisfied that the staff has been sufficiently instructed by the board as to what to do. I think the applicant should be reasonably certain of some decisions being made at the next meeting, because as the observation has been made, this thing has been going on since like October, right, so it would be very nice to bring this to a conclusion.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question, if I could ask John that question. I know you drive the boulevard a lot in the wintertime, and there's a couple spots up there where, because of the runoff, sometimes because of the steepness of the slope, maybe a rock formation, or driveways, and the water tends to run out onto Where's Boulevard and freeze. And sometimes the city treats it with tons of sand and salt, and sometimes they don't know about it, and cars that, with that being said, is there some sort of a plan where the road is going to come down from Langley Cove by the bridge there? Is there some sort of plan to catch any melt-off that's going to come there, because I'm assuming you're going to treat those roads pretty heavy, again, due to the steepness there, to keep them passable in the wintertime, to catch that water? Or something there to stop that water from running out into the highway?
Yes, absolutely. When you do the new road, it isn't going to be like what it is right now. When it comes down, there's actually catch basins down at the bottom and on the inside edge of the road in between Shelby Court and and the entrance down, I think it's Alagandere Way. But there's a big detention pond right there, so the water gets caught and put back into the detention pond before it goes out onto the boulevard.
Okay.
Is that Langley Brook, is that what that's called?
Langley Brook, Langley Brook is the
Is it, is Langley Brook in any way part of the drainage system that you designed for this site?
I believe it eventually outlets into it.
So isn't there a siltation problem in the Cove where Langley Brook meets the lake?
Yep, and there's, we've been, there's been a bunch of conditions put on by Water Works and all the third-party reviews that the condition of it is determined ahead of time before any construction starts. It's going to be monitored continually during construction and post-construction. And that includes water to quality and everything.
Could the drainage, the drainage design, as approved, actually improve the situation from the pre-existing condition?
Oh, absolutely. The, when the trailer park was there, I mean, the trailers were basically hanging out over the brook, and there was no buffer at all to the brook. When this is done, there's at least a 75-foot of vegetated buffer to the brook.
Drainage swales and things like that? That's good. I'm sure the property owners down in the Cove, in Langley Cove would be appreciative of that.
Just for the record, I'm satisfied that the planning department has thoroughly vetted all the issues as it relates to drainage and the steepness of the slopes, and there have been multiple requirements asked of the planning board, and for the most part, Langley Cove has been cooperative and addressed those issues in a positive way. I think that's a fair statement.
I'm sure of that. I wasn't implying otherwise. I was simply asking a question.
I'd just like to hear him say it.
All right. If there's anything else from the board?
You need, Chairman, you need to vote to table them for till the next meeting, please.
May we have a motion?
I move to table this with the concerns of the board for till the next meeting, so that we can address the issues that have been expressed tonight.
Is there a second?
No second.
And for the record, this would be, intention would be to table both Pogus Woods and Langley Cove, right?
Yes.
And so is that, you don't need two separate motions, do you? Any discussion on the motion that's pending? Any question about it? If not, can we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, could we please just clarify that that would move the public hearing to the July 10th planning board meeting? I just need that confirmed by the board, please.
Would the maker of the motion so amend?
Sure.
July 10th planning board meeting, just so it's clear for everyone when it will be picked up again.
July 10th.
Do I amend it, amend my motion to table it to include the language to the July 10th planning board meeting?
At which time there'll be a further public hearing and perhaps a vote by this board on the two applications that are pending. Good point, thank you very much. Any other discussion or question? All right, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Opposed?
For the record, I abstain.
For the record, Mr. Contardo is abstaining from the vote. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. So now we have a public hearing on PL 2018-0037 SP, 55 Bay Street. It's a proposal for 100 indoor boat berths and seasonal outdoor boat storage with an eye towards future valet service. This is down on Lake Winnisquam in the lower reaches of the One of Passaki River, right?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, let's hear from the developer then.
For the record, I'm Attorney Phil Brouillard for the Developer Knott Brown LLC. Also appearing with me is John Roke, who's going to present the plans to the board. But basically, this is a boat storage facility located on the old Fred Fuller boat plant, which has been cleaned up from environmental issues. And basically, we're proposing a 90 by 110-foot building, the peak of which is of which is forty-five point seven five feet, and the eaves are forty-two feet. Basically, we have received a variance from the city to allow this use on the property. The maximum height is sixty feet, so we're well under fif, um, just about fourteen feet under the requirements of sixty feet that are allowed in the D R D. And we have provided for future valet use. We've got a dumpster and an outdoor fuel tank, fencing, landscaping, pervious parking surfaces, and we're asking the board to approve the boat storage building and the site plan that we've submitted today. And with no further ado, this being a, a little lighter fare than what you've been dealing with previously here, a little dessert might be in order. This is rather simple, and I'm going to have John present the plans, and hopefully there's a little color and life in this so that you feel a little bit better.
He's already excited, look at him.
There you go.
Well, I don't know, it says here there's a thousand dollar water bill's going to be paid.
I did return the meter to him, though.
Oh, that's a biggie, right there, a big one.
Yes, Mr. Rokee.
Uh, good evening, John Rokee, Rokee Consulting here, the owner. Um, yeah, this one was a little bit more straightforward. Uh, it's an existing, it's an existing commercial lot, there's an existing building on the site that is, needs to be torn down, we're going to tear it down. There's basically no landscaping, no green space, no nothing, and it's right up against, this is right up against the Wild Trail.
Right.
Uh, so this is going to be, we're, we're going to add landscaping all the way along the edge of it, put it, we're going to put up a fence along the edge of it. It's a, it's a vast improvement to everybody that's going to be on the trail. We, to, to balance the pre and post flows, actually, we make, we make the flows even better, less is going to run off this property after we're done than what it does even right now, because it's, there's, there's no drainage at all, it's basically gravel parking lot with pavement and remnants of pavement. So, everything works good drainage-wise, and like I said, I mean, we're introducing a lot more green space than what exists there right now. Uh, we're also, I don't know if you mentioned it, but we're actually going to do the sidewalk all the way around. So, you can, you can come through the parking lot, like once you get your boat, you can go through the parking lot, right onto the sidewalk, basically any direction you go. The, what was it? There's basically just a wa, a water and, we are going to connect water and sewer, because we're going to have some-
It's going to be sprinkled.
Sprinkled, but sprinkled building.
And the boat washing is done inside the building.
Yep.
Now, where would the equipment be, like the, the lifts and all that, the forklifts and all that, where would that be?
It would be in the building.
In the building?
Forklifts are in the building, and the future-
Comes out, you know, and it means-
Right.
Yeah, if, in the, for the future, if it, if it does go, if everything else goes forward with it as we're planning, the, you would basically come out the doors, go across Winnisquam Avenue, and, and boats would be, go in and out of the water at that point. And we actually worked with, we actually worked with DPW, and we did not put the pervious pavement along that route, so.
Yep, I'm familiar with the, the lot. What about aesthetics? Talk about, talk to me about this huge building in the neighborhood, what's the impact?
Well, I'd like to suggest to you that this isn't the garden club of Laconia, the-
It's a long history of industrial use down there.
Uh, there's a, basically, an old railroad warehouse directly abutting. There's a former, uh, large, heavy manufacturing plant next door, there's another large manufacturing plant next door, there's a foundry probably within four or five hundred feet of this. And what we're doing, if you look at the plan, is we're maximizing the separation between the structures. So, in other words, we're moving the structure closer to the road so there's more open space. For instance, when you turn down that road now, that garage is along the road, that is all going to be gone.
Right.
So, when you turn that corner, it's just going to ex, expand the horizon, because the building is recessed pretty much all the way, all the way back. So, I think spatially with the green area, it's going to be a whole different aura and a whole different view when you turn that corner, when that garage is gone. And the demo, I do have the demo permit for that, and we're, we're all good to go, and I've got the contractor coming in a couple of weeks to take care of that. So, we think that it's going to be a, a new big building. It's going to be, it's going to have a fence and landscaping, and it, it's probably going to be the nicest big building in that particular area. And, and I'm hoping that, you know, with the improvements that we make, some of the abutting properties will, will hopefully follow suit.
Hopefully, it'll be more attractive than the one that was built in my neighborhood by Lakeport Landing, right at the end of the street, which is just a great big white box.
Yeah, well, I don't want to throw stones, but I can understand your concern, and I've seen that building.
And aesthetics is only one consideration and not a great one, but-
That, by the way, that building is considerably taller than this one.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a three-story.
And this one is bigger. It's, that one just goes out.
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
I have, having lived down there for twenty-something years, I have a question on the site from when you turn on, from Bay Street onto Winnisquam, taking a right or a left?
Ooh, I had the same question I was going to ask.
It's very bad.
Well, the building's going to be gone.
I understand the building's going to be gone, but is there any, is there going to be low bush there?
Well, I'll let John, he did the landscaping plan out.
That's the landscaping I have questioned.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put any, I didn't put any trees right at the corner, like basically, you got the, we're, we have the proposed sign, like just a, you know, whatever the project sign is, with some perennial plants around the sign, right at the corner.
Yeah, because it'll be better sight.
It'll be way, way better.
Because it's not good now.
The, the other thing is, when you're coming down Bay Street, you'll be able to look over, and when you're coming down Winnisquam Avenue, you're going to, you're going to be able to look right over at the intersection. So, like I say, it's just going to be an explosion of sight and light, and it's going to be a lot better.
And you've talked to DPW about maybe signage there, better lines in the street?
Well, we have to do a little repaving, and we have to line stripe our parking lot, so perhaps we'll ask them if they want to do something like that.
I didn't know if you wanted a crosswalk or something from that?
Well, we will want a crosswalk, but we, we also, if everything goes according to plan, DPW wants us to reinforce the road where the forklift goes over. And so, when we do that, we're going to have to pave, taper in and taper out, and we'll have to re, re, re-stripe it.
And that will be part of a-
That'll be a whole nother, a whole different application.
Plan it back up on the screen here.
I got a question. What are you going to do across the road, Phil, with that building, Martell's building, the old one? Are you going somewhere?
Well, that's under agreement, and part of the agreement is the, its roofs get complete with metal roofing, and we're going to, you know, re-stripe that, and we're going to paint the buildings and-
So, where would the access be from here to there?
So, that's, that's proposed as part of another step in the project that's not part of this approval.
It's a different application, I would be coming in to you in January or February with that.
Which, where's that what, where's that?
Well, was there one hinge upon the other?
No, it doesn't. They're, if, this is just storage, storage, and it's, yeah, that's all we're asking for today.
Martell's across the street? Okay.
Yep.
So, you're going to-
We wanted to tell you what the ultimate plan was, but that's, that's not what's, that's not what's before you right now.
I understand, I think we're trying to keep it in context.
Yeah.
It sounds like it would be a positive for the neighborhood, an improvement for the neighborhood overall.
It would be.
We're just interested in making sure that, you know, it's as, as, as much of an improvement as reasonably possible.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for them from the board? Mr. St. Clair?
Thank you. You just caught my ear when you said that DPW wants you to reinforce the road with forklifts to go on across. Did I hear somebody say that?
Yes, but that would be part of the-
It was their idea.
It, in the future, when, if we go forward and do we get, we get the appro, we go for the approvals for valet service to actually have, have the two sides of the road work together.
Yep.
Uh, DPW didn't want the forklift just going over Winnisquam Avenue as it exists right now.
Well, look, I've got my, my curiosity, reinforcing roads, because maybe there's an idea for citywide reinforced roads.
That's what prompted my question, I couldn't figure what was going on.
Yeah.
So, I just was curious, because the first thing I could think of was a nice concrete pad.
No, the, the, well, that wouldn't be good for plowing, but the, the fork trucks are pretty, the fork trucks are pretty, pretty heavy, like.
With the repetitive back and forth, it will deteriorate that section, yes.
And that's why we want it, we want, we don't want any, any problems.
So, I'm at just dawn, dawn breaks on Marblehead. So, the, the next phase, when you go to, if you go to valet service, the launch point's going to be where Martell's is now, their ramp in that area?
No, well, it's either going to be the ramp, or we, we might build a, a thing where you can drive up to a point and then drop the boats in.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I don't, what are those called? I don't, I mean-
Lifts.
No, it's a well or, it's called something.
A launching well or something.
Why don't you just call it a thing where you can drop the boats in?
That's what I did.
That's a really good technical turn, these two attorneys here going, um, well, so that means that, 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 that's Martell's, which is a, a place that's near and dear to my heart, is, is going to go by the wayside, isn't it?
Well, it's not going anywhere, it might be under new ownership.
Okay. Yes, I, I don't, I don't want to endure any childhood trauma tonight. All right, is there any other board comments or questions? Well, hearing none then, why don't we have a public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven fifty-three P M. Would declare the public hearing open? Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard on this application, fifty-five Bay Street? It's a boat storage facility. Any butters? Any other members of the public? Any members of the public wish to be heard? All right, hearing none then, and I'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-four P M. Um, is the board wish to engage in any further discussion about this?
Should we accept this thing first?
Mr. Contardo?
I'm going to leave, and maybe the alternate here can be, have a voting, vote on my seat right now, okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Contardo. Thank you for your services, Chair. All right, at seven fifty-four P M. then, the records show that, I've forgotten your last, Bellabo?
Bellabo.
Yes, Mr. Bellabo is now seated as a full member, and that Mr. Contardo has left for the evening, presumably. Again, any other discussion on this? Well, how about a motion then? I have a question. Of course you do. Couldn't, because we don't have all nine members here, couldn't Mr. Bellabo sit, have been a voting member of everything from the very beginning? I thought he was. I think the Chair ruled he wasn't initially, but it wasn't challenged, so-
If we have quorum, I don't know how that works.
Uh, yeah, no, technically, you're right, David, yes.
So, if we don't have all nine members, we concede, we concede an alternate, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Well, let's do that, let's do that in the future.
Depends on, yes, but depends on who's, who's absent. For instance, if you're absent-
If I'm absent, you can't do it.
Right.
Right. And I'm not sure about Gail's status, probably not, but-
Or Dave Broden.
Yes.
Okay, so the ex officio's notwithstanding.
Right.
I will, in the future, be mindful of this delicate issue. I would submit that whether or not he was a voting member on the last application probably wouldn't change history in any real way, so. Okay, so, again, may I have a motion of some sort?
Would you like staff recommendations first, please?
Oh, yeah. And then we'll do that. Thank you, thank you so much.
So, this particular project is only for the boat storage at this time. They do plan, or they have been talking about another phase which may involve valet. This is only for the boat storage and that, this particular lot right now. We went through two T R Cs, as is usual. There are a couple planner revisions, mostly related to the water lines and sprinklers. A couple of things that we just want to note, you guys got a copy of this?
Yes.
Yep. So, that outdoor, if you look at the site plan, there's two parking areas. The parking area that does not directly go into the building will be used as outdoor boat storage as well. We are requiring that those, that area has to be appropriately screened with a fence or plantings, especially given that it does back up to the Wild Trail as well.
Could you put the map up and describe, like, it had numbers on them?
Yep, so those are parking spaces, eight through seven and twenty-two to thirty-one.
Okay.
And there's space for-
Over in this area right here.
Yep, okay.
And, and there's space for snow as well?
Uh, there is space for snow storage. It, it, it was noted to us by the applicant that they really don't intend to access the site much in the winter, other than to potentially clear it for an emergency vehicle. So, they don't necessarily anticipate a ton of snow clearing, but there is, there, there are dedicated snow storage locations.
They won't be clearing the, the immediate front of that building in case there's a fire on this thing, right?
That's it, though. So, there's plenty of snow storage in there.
It is sprinkled.
Yep.
Right? So, all right, so, and these, these boats are all, the outdoor boats, they're all be shrink wrapped, right?
Yeah.
Welcome to my neighborhood.
There's a fire hydrant right there.
What color?
It's what?
Blue?
The fire hydrant's-
So, other than those conditions which will be dealt with in planner revisions, there are a couple of outstanding things with the water department which will be addressed prior to them beginning construction. And other than that, we recommend, or with those conditions, we recommend approval.
The conditions, you're talking about the fire department, those are in the conditions of approval?
It's all in there, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Lawford.
And we agree to all those, too. We agree to all of them.
Okay. So, we would make those conditions specifically part of any motion that we might make. Are there any questions for staff or for the developer? For attorney Brouillard? All right, sensing none, then I guess I would entertain a motion at this time regarding the approval of, what is the application number here? PL twenty eighteen thirty-seven S P.
I move to approve, is that, is that what I was supposed to say?
No, it's what I moved to approve. We have a motion to approve.
With staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations.
Still learning the lingo.
Yes, me too. Okay. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. St. Clair. Any further discussion? I'm just being really cautious, because I'm used to, like, going through-
The whole thing.
Recommendations, one, um-
You have the option of doing that, or you can just cite, approve with the conditions as shown in the staff review.
If you're comfortable with that, that saves a lot of time, and I'm really comfortable with it. I'm very comfortable with that.
We are, yep.
Wonderful thing.
Yes, yes. So, here we are, we're on the verge of making Laconia the boat capital of New Hampshire, the boat storage capital of New Hampshire. Any further discussion?
At least it'll be a pretty boat storage area.
Then I guess I would ask for a vote. All those in favor of approval, say, raise your hand? Opposed? Abstentions? Sounds like you've got an approval, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
You like that? The boat storage capital of New Hampshire, Charlie?
That's a license plate.
Yeah. We, we could shrink wrap the whole city eventually. I'd like to be shrink wrapped. Okay. Do we plunge ahead, or do, does anybody need a potty break or anything?
Yes.
Would you like, well, it's adjourned for five minutes, please? At, uh, whatever time it is.
There's a clock on the wall.
Eight oh one. Oh, there is a clock on the wall, look at that.
You can look right up at that clock.
Well, I don't know, I don't usually sit in this chair, Mr. Bounce. And I certainly did not expect to.
Well, get used to it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just wanna remind the board that when we take these breaks, um, we are still live for that time because we can't shut the system down.
Right.
So, just keep that in mind.
Okay, everything you say will.
Everything you say will be used against you. I had my one moment glory, that's it. Remember that?
Yes.
I thought so.
So, that was pretty cool. Yeah, it's okay, she's got that smiling face. Assuming the guy's a nice guy.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like she's in interior design now or something.
Okay. Yep, and she's working for a small architecture.
That other applicant comes. I'm glad they're waiting here before they get married, that's very smart. Years, and, and then, um, she's still playing. And she couldn't work it into her schedule.
That for a.
Still sitting in our basement. Is, is, uh, so she's a senior this year? So, I went here, this was in the paper, I took great pleasure in showing her, we get, we got her on the road to.
Did you say nine fifty? Oh, you'd be waiting.
But she's a good job. She's, she's enjoying life.
But these are, right.
That's what I thought it was.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
I don't like that either, you're hard traveling. Good for them. So, I have a backup. You have any? Sorry, I'm bringing it there. I told you I got about thirty-two. So, Dean? I expect a, a report on your investigation on the, uh, DPW's reinforced roads.
Get your hopes up, Charlie.
Didn't your ears perk right up when you heard that?
Get your hopes up.
We don't know anything about it yet, that's why I was cautioning you guys. They might have been talking to DPW, but we actually don't know anything about it yet.
I understand that, but, but nonetheless, the term was used.
The difference between the applicant paying for it and the city paying for it, so.
Well, that's why, but the applicant should pay for it, and, and I think if you just put concrete across there, you know, obviously level with the asphalt so you can plow it. But that would, that would, that would, because a lot of cities, uh, like in Boston stuff, where the buses always pull off in the same spot, that's concrete.
Yeah.
I think that's also because of their turning capacity, though, too, because you have to have a reinforced road when there's a tighter turn of the tires. Because it deteriorates, it's kinda like putting a mat.
Is that what's happening on all our roads?
Actually, it's probably a good chunk on any of the turns, any eighteen-wheeler that goes. No, I understand that. No, I know that, but you know what, in order for change to happen, a little pain has to go through, you know, it's kinda like going on Court Street right now. No one wants to go drive through that.
A little pain?
A little pain.
I think we should have a definition of a little. Years.
We can't be pampered the whole time, no. We can't be pampered everywhere we go. But no, I understand what.
It's not a very good welcome to our visitors.
They're situated, no, but, how is it gonna get better if we go start somewhere, unfortunately?
Well, no, no, my, my complaint is not starting like major construction projects. My problem is that we have a paving project, and two years later, it's in dire need of repair.
Correct.
It should be lasting much longer than two years, whether it's a tight turn or a.
The Chair's already taken tea, I got things to do.
Not a good deal for the taxpayers.
Kalina, can you page him?
We gonna have burnout contest?
No, we didn't, that's gonna be next year, I think.
Can you go?
Talk about on the road, are you talking about?
Doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, they'll do, they'll be doing that at.
You stick your eye in if you have.
They'll be doing that at Laconia Roadhouse, anybody, it's just a matter of people applied for.
All right, what's next? We turn down the next year.
They're doing, they're doing the Tower Hill, Hill climb, so that's gonna be happening.
I actually just took the day off to Mark, like, go see it for the first time.
On Tuesday?
Uh, no, Tower Hill? Talk about that stop.
Yeah, it's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
It's been five minutes. Mr. Vice Chair, I think you should start the meeting.
I should start.
Please.
Especially if they're outside.
Now we don't have to leave at eleven o'clock again, like last week. No, 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 no.
Longer than five minutes, if you go. You weren't here for an ad chaired meeting.
I was with the Chairman, so I'm okay. Lame down on the Chairman. He kept saying five minutes. Okay.
Standing after all these years.
Thank you, folks, for your patience, um, call the meeting back to order at eight oh nine thirty. And we are up for, just find, this is Outer Bridge, right? Okay, um, application acceptance for, uh, PL twenty-eighteen zero zero five seven CUP, um, at eighty Davidson Drive. Is that it?
No.
It's right at the bottom of the first page.
Oh, for gosh's sake.
It's the program. It's the program.
PL twenty-eighteen zero zero three six SU and zero zero five six, conditional use permit for the wetlands, um, and I will introduce the, uh, or turn the floor over to the applicant.
Thank you very much, my name's Mark McLeod, I'm here, uh, representing the H.L. Turner Group. On behalf of the applicant, uh, MJ Estates LLC, and John Bernard is here with me. What he's proposing to do, this is, uh, within Southdown Shores, and the parcel is identified as Village Number Ten, uh, Southdown Farm. It's on Outer Bridge Drive, it's a fifteen-acre parcel, um, it is split by a.
Pardon me, I have a confession.
Yes.
I'm old and seen out, could you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Do I need to repeat that?
Huh?
Would you like me to repeat that?
Sure, I got you.
Okay.
You continue on.
Okay, thank you. This is a plus or minus fifteen-acre parcel with a stream channel running through the middle of it, um, it has a seventy-five-foot buffer on either side of that. So, what you're seeing on the plan in front of you, the, the solid blue areas on that plan are the delineated wetlands, and the hatched area, the, the lighter blue outside of that, that's the wetland buffer. What we're proposing to do is create a seven-lot residential subdivision here with two separate roadways. The western terrace, the, the westerly most one is just over three hundred feet long, and the other is a five hundred, four hundred-foot roadway. These will both be private roads, uh, maintained by the homeowners association, developed for these seven individual lots. To create the layout of these lots, um, we took great pains to ensure we aren't disturbing any of the wetland buffers, so all the required buildable lot area that we have remains outside of the, the wetland buffer areas. This area, this parcel is serviced by municipal water and municipal sewer, um, kind of down at the corner of the lot there. Right there, there's an existing, that's where there's an existing sewer manhole that we're going to tie into. Now, to get the three lots from the west end over there, uh, we're going to directionally drill under that stream channel, install a pump station so that we can get everything over through that interceptor. We have submitted an application to DES so that we can tie into that, that's, um, state-owned, it's the Opechii Interceptor, I believe, is, uh, is what that is designated. There, to get over there, we do have some temporary wetland impacts, uh, it's really just for some trenching to get the, the gravity portion of the sewer line installed through there. I mean, the, the manhole we're tying into is already within the wetland buffer, so we can't get to it without making this disturbance, but it is going to be a temporary impact, and just for installing the, the, uh, infrastructure for that sewer line, and once we're done, we'll restore that back to its condition, and there will be no further, um, disturbances in there. One of the conditions that have, you know, we've been working with TRC, we've had a couple of meetings there, and we've been to the Conservation Commission, um, to address their comments and concerns, and, and we've complied with all of those. One of the things they asked us to do is to clearly delineate the, the wetland buffer, um, on the deeds for the individual lots, so that there'll be no further, no, no disturbances allowed in those, um, and we'll be addressing invasive species within the, the site development there, and, uh, that is pretty much it in a, in a nutshell. You know, stormwater management, the design of that, we've, we've planned for the future houses in the report that we put together and submitted to the city. It's managed on-site with, uh, vegetated swales on the sides of the road, and a couple of, uh, vegetated detention ponds that the Conservation Commission has asked us to create rain gardens of those, um, and that is what we are planning to do to, to help address the, uh, treatment of that, of that stormwater as it comes off.
Take a good design. How many lots?
Seven.
There's a lot of wetland.
Down at that southern part, certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, none of that is, is developable, um, but, you know, we were able to meet the requirements, um, that the city requests for this district, without any disturbances to those buffers, uh, nor to the wetlands themselves, with the, the one exception is approximately twelve hundred square feet of temporary impacts for the sewer line to make that connection to the, to the existing interceptor.
And I see there's a twelve-foot wide recreation trail easement along property line in two, two, two dimensions, two directions? But is that, is that an existing trail?
It is, yes. It's an easement, I don't know what the condition of the trail is.
Snowmobile trail, yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Did the Conservation Commission, um, find any, um, invasive species in this area?
I think we have a report here that said no.
Well, I have a report.
But I don't think the Conservation Commission did.
Oh, this is the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau.
Heritage, yeah, Heritage Bureau.
They asked us, when we go to disturb the two sets that are within their setbacks, they have them come out and look at it and make sure they're not getting it. If they are, they wanna identify a flaw.
Sure.
Okay, great.
And this watershed drains into Opechii, right?
Yes.
And that's, um, is this, is this stream delineated here, is this the one that goes under Elm Street and discharges down, uh, um, what's the name of that neighborhood? Anthony Drive?
I don't know if it does, I know it comes down into this wetland in this southern part of the, the property, where it goes beyond, out of this wetland, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The state permit that you're requiring, uh, or required to get, have you gotten that yet, or it's in process?
It's in process, we submitted the plans to DES.
Do you know how long they have until the decision?
It's usually within thirty days, they usually turn that around pretty quickly, and that's just for permission to tie into their, their interceptor.
Good, thank you.
I would like to introduce, uh, Steve Nix, uh, Mr. Bernard's attorney.
Thank you, uh, my name's Stephen Nix, I'm representing the applicant, uh, tonight. First, uh, there were a couple of waivers, uh, one was for the sidewalks, uh, and be, and that's, that's dealt with in the, uh, in the report, and remind me what the second waiver was. Oh, no, that was condition. Oh, and, yeah, and the, and the architectural review, because the, the applicant is not going to be building structures, that these are standalone lots, uh, that will be sold, and then the, um, the owner will build their own homes on them, um, so there, there is no architectural review, um, from the planning board. There, so we're asking for that, that waiver, which is more of a technical waiver. So, there are, um, a few legal items, and I'll, I'll make it as short as I can, um, the, there is a declaration that has been submitted, and the declaration, uh, which is part of the application, uh, clearly states that the roads will be owned by the Village Ten Association. They won't, these will not be city roads, and they will not be Southdown roads, they will be owned by, um, the Village Ten Association. The Village Association will be responsible for maintenance, plowing, um, uh, maintenance of the, uh, drainage structures. There, there was, uh, some documents early on in the process that indicated that Southdown, uh, that the roads would be owned by Southdown, and that is not correct, we're, and we were looking through the documents before the meeting tonight to see if we got them all cleared up, but if, if we find those, we will, uh, be amending either the document or the plan, because the Village Association is gonna own these roads. So, we wanna make that clear. There's also, uh, the sewer pump station will be, uh, maintained by the associate, by the Village Ten Association, not Southdown. And that's been made very clear, uh, in, in the declaration. We've also, for those of us who have been around for a while, we, we understand Southdown, the Southdown structure. Now, that sounds like a, uh, any, anyone that's been around for a very long time knows that, uh, Southdown is a little bit complicated. It's a planned unit development out of the nineteen eighties, early nineteen eighties, that has, uh, a global association, and then underneath it, there are villages, and eat, and those villages have their own associations. So, there's a legal relationship between the, 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 the lower villages and, and the Southdown Association. And the Southdown Association has, uh, asked that my client enter into an agreement, uh, a written agreement, uh, regarding the roads, the management of the sewer, um, the, uh, they've also asked that there be a separate bond put up to protect the common, uh, area roads i- within Southdown that wouldn't be covered under the, the, the city bond, all of which my client has agreed to do, and, um, I have a, a copy of the signed agreement here, uh, which I'd like to submit and make it part of the, uh, part of the file, uh, and if the board so desires, you can make the, uh, reference this as a condition of approval, but, um, so I've got this that I'll hand in.
Thank you.
Sorry for the late date on this, but it was just signed this afternoon, I believe, um, and Attorney, um, Robert.
That's the agreement with Southdown?
Yes. And Attorney, uh, Robert Carey is here representing, uh, Southdown as well, um, and, um, he can comment. And he can comment if I, if you don't mind, chairman, so we could.
No, jump right in.
Thank you. Bob Carey, let's see, one familiar face here, David. Yes, we, we.
Hi, Bob.
There were some things we wanted to work with the applicant on to streamline the process for him. And these things have been included in this agreement that we have reached and we signed this afternoon. One of the applicants is out of state. It addresses the concerns that we had and solved some of the issues that we wanted to, would have fleshed out. And so this hopefully will make the process simpler and easier for the applicant while at the same time addressing our concerns. The agreement we ask is, both parties ask that it be made part of the record and be accepted as conditions of the planning board's approval of the site plan. The one thing that the board might want to know is some of the things are related to the homeowners association. But one thing is that Southdown's Recreation Association will be named as additional obligee or beneficiary on the construction bond. And then there's one aspect of the project that is going to be the sewer pump station that we've agreed to have an NGO review and provide any feedback on. So we hope to streamline the process for this board too and present it with a solution. And so that's the agreement that we ask to be made, a condition of any approval.
Thank you, Attorney Carey.
Thank you. And if I just take a minute, I believe, I believe that covers my legal presentation. If you have any questions.
So this, this subdivision is actually part of the Southdown development that you're doing, right?
That's correct.
And so explain to me why, I know there's no sidewalks in a lot of places up in Southdown and they were built back in the eighties and we weren't requiring it. But explain to me why, apart from other places don't have them, why should we waive the sidewalk requirement for this new development that you're proposing to do? Why?
Well, you've said one of the reasons in that is that the sidewalks will go to no sidewalk. They'll go nowhere. But one of the other issues, not issues, but reasons is there's really, there's two roads here. One road has three houses on it. They're very short cul-de-sacs. One road has three houses on it, the other has four houses on it. And so the amount of traffic that's actually going to be on the road is going to be de minimis. It's like living at the end of a cul-de-sac. So it doesn't make sense to create more paved area off the road that is, that's only going to be used by three houses in one section and four in the other. They're not through roads. The only traffic that's going to be on those roads are going to be the people that are living there. It just doesn't make sense.
Outer Bridge Road is the main road in that area, though, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Are there sidewalks anywhere on Outer Bridge?
None.
None.
Well, I haven't been on the board for ten years. That could be part of it. Well, we used to get criticized for sidewalks to nowhere, so it's amusing that Attorney Nix used that phrase. But I also hear what you're saying about the interior sidewalks being unnecessary. Interesting. Attorney Carey, may I ask?
Certainly.
One of the, I would imagine that one of your client's concerns is the impact of any of these new developments on the existing infrastructure? Is that kind of what, I haven't seen the agreement, so I don't know what you're addressing in there, but. Sure, certainly.
Here's a copy of the agreement.
What a courtly thing to do. May I approach?
That's so the bailiff won't tackle him, David.
David taught me all the manners I know.
Yeah, oh, they are in trouble, sir.
So, yes, the, one of the issues is concern for the roadway as they bring equipment in and out. And so there's a provision in there for a fifty thousand dollar bond to address any possible damage that may be caused to the roads during this.
And the pump station you were concerned about?
Yes, and the, there is no pump station in the Southdown neighborhood. And so the engineer that we are having do a peer review of it is from Novus Engineering, who does a lot of work, I believe, for the city of Laconia, also has worked with H.L. Turner, the applicant's engineer. So we think we have some good people looking at the issue. So in this agreement helps us make sure that any issues are worked through.
Who's the third party to this agreement?
The, there's only two parties. Mr. Bernard, who's here, is one of the principals of MJ Farm Estate. And Mr. McCarthy is the other principal of MJ Farm Estate.
So the Southdown Recreation Association, that's your client?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Any other questions for either of these fine attorneys?
I'm curious about the snowmobile trail that goes through there. Will that be main, will it be viable?
I could speak to that because there's no availability on it. They, they have the rights to use it. They don't really use it. They just go anywhere they want. Now, it's been vacant land forever in there.
Oh, I see.
And so if you ever talk to anybody that actually lives and participates with what happens in Southdown, it's me and you're all over the place, but at least they will have that.
Will you mark, will you mark the trail?
Yes.
I mean, the other thing I would point out, too, is that the trail.
Just pointed to yourself on the screen.
Right, yeah.
Right about where his armpit is. I'm sorry.
Where that trail runs up along here.
Yeah.
It's within the wetland buffer in here. And the, you know, the properties are going to have deed restrictions preventing them from doing anything within that buffer. So they really wouldn't have a way to prevent, you know, access along that, that snowmobile trail.
I'm just trying to tell them they can look at the, look at the, up at the screen up there.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
One other thing I wanted to mention while I was up here was with respect to the utility infrastructure. The water line that runs through there is owned by the city of Laconia. And the Public Works Department has looked at that for, we coordinated with them for sizing the water lines through here and putting a new hydrant in along Outer Bridge Drive. So that meets their requirements. And then, you know, once we get, as I mentioned, once we get to that sewer manhole, that's DES's infrastructure there. And that's, that's the reason for that permit. They need to look at the proposed flow volume and all that.
Is this a new village? Is that what, in the scheme of things, it's a new village? What's it going to be called? Santa's Village or?
What's the homeowners association?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's Darwin.
Darwin Award Village.
The Village Ten Homeowners Association. It's catchy. Oh, did they?
Yes, it's going to be Darwin.
That's right. They changed it again today about half hour.
Darwin Place Western Terrace.
Darwin Place Western Terrace.
All right.
Where did that come from?
D-P-W-T.
I didn't write this particular document.
Oh, my God. I'm sorry I asked the question. Well, okay, so a new village is born thus. Okay. All right, could we hear from staff, perhaps?
Would you like to open it to the public first or do you want the staff review first?
I don't have a preference. What do you suggest?
I suggest you open it to the public first.
I think upon the suggestion of our excellent staff that I'm going to open the public hearing at eight thirty P.M. on this application. Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard? Are there any butters? Any snowmobilers? Okay, yes, come on up, ma'am.
I don't need to get up, but the sled races also go along that ski, that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, when they do the long race. And it's always been a joy for all of us in Southdown to watch that. But they haven't done it for a while and the snow always seems to go away when it's time for them to come back.
I think this agreement specifies that there shall be snow. The developers promised that. So the dogs will run. Thank you for that. Could we have your name for the record, ma'am?
Marge Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard about anything, sled dogs, anything? Okay, sensing none. Now, if staff is ready, I should like very much to hear from them.
So this project has gone through two TRCs as is the usual process. We have a couple of planner visions, mostly related to the water lines. In the homeowners association documents, we did just get an updated set of homeowners documents just this afternoon. You'll note that under planner visions, we do have that we want additional revisions. That is in addition to even the ones that we received today. So we'll want to work with the applicant before they start construction to make sure that those are updated to our satisfaction. Other than that, the board does have to remember when they vote, they need to vote separately on the conditional use permit, the waiver requests. We have no issues with the landscaping or architectural waivers. The sidewalk waiver is really up to you all based on their case. And other than that, the only other unusual thing is that street tree placement. We're going to review that before we issue COs instead of that traditional landscaping plan just because they're not sure where the driveways and the homes are going to be placed yet. So based on that, we'll review that at that time, which is totally fine. If the board would like to add, there was a memo from the Conservation Commission technician that came in too late to be included with the staff review. There are some conditions on there that the applicant referenced that they're, that they're well aware of. So board would like to make reference to that in their motion. We can add those as conditions as well.
So those are not part of the conditions that you've put it on here?
They were, no, they're not at the moment.
So do we have extra copies of the?
Everyone should have a copy of that. It's just a one-page, yes, yep?
Is this approval or acceptance? This is approval, right?
Well, acceptance and approval.
Acceptance for?
Oh, it was accepted? Oh, never mind. Sorry, it's just approval. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, and you said separate, the separate darkets are the SU, the CUP, and the waivers, right?
Yep.
Where am I looking for the list of waivers? Okay, it must be on the application here. No, I'm not seeing it.
So if, when a member makes a motion, if they would like to make a motion wherein they reference the staff review and the Conservation Commission memo, that would be a complete motion that we would be able to coordinate in the notice of action.
Excuse me, there's also the typo on the date?
Oh, yes, thank you. Under completion date, completion in Mylar, under project completion dates, that should be June fourth, twenty twenty. It says twenty eighteen, which was yesterday, which would make them very efficient. So twenty twenty.
Yes.
And then if the board would also like to add, I'm sorry to throw so much at you, but if you would like to add an acknowledgement of this agreement between the developer and Southdown, I would recommend you add it as condition I under section five.
Under five? Oh. Five H-I, the agreement.
During and after construction.
Right, because it logically falls after condominium movement or association documents. Okay. And what is the recommendation, staff?
So I would recommend that the planning board approve the conditional use permit. I would recommend that they approve the landscaping and architectural waivers. I would recommend that they approve the subdivision with the conditions as noted in the staff review with the one completion date changed to twenty twenty, the addition of the Conservation Commission comments, and number five I, that the board acknowledges the agreement between the developer and Southdown development. I don't have a recommendation on the sidewalks. I really think that that's up to the board to weigh the case.
So you want to amend one D, completion date, completion in Mylar, date of June fourth, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, yeah.
Yep.
Is that right?
That's the only danger.
Want to add condition I with respect to the agreement?
Yes.
Have you seen the agreement before?
We just took a look at it.
Well.
If the board is not comfortable adding it, I think it's legally applicable anyway.
Sure.
I'm not comfortable proving it without everybody having an understanding of what the impact of that agreement is on this project. I mean, I'm taking these guys' word.
Yep, I understand.
I'm not disputing them, but.
If I understand it, the purpose of the agreement is to protect the overall association, Southdown's interests by requiring this developer to post bonds, basically, right?
So, so I think it's up to the board if you want to include it or not. My recommendation, if you want to include it, is to just say that you acknowledge it, that you're not requiring it as a condition, so to speak.
That would make sense.
It's up to you, though.
Let me see the agreement. Here.
I'm going to need to review.
You pass this down to Counselor Bounce, please. While we're doing that, I just want to comment that how remarkably thorough the staff reports are and detailed. It's an awful lot of work that goes into this.
Thank you very much.
So there.
I have a question, if I could, again.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. On the sidewalks there, just to refresh my memory, was there a time when, if the waiver was granted for sidewalks, money was then taken from that that would have gone in the sidewalks to be put somewhere else in the city on sidewalks?
So you've got a good memory. The planning board has done a number of different things with sidewalk waivers. They will approve the waiver and that's it. You don't have to put sidewalks in. They will deny the waiver. You have to put sidewalks in. Or they'll deny the waiver but give you the option, if you don't want to install the sidewalks yourself, DPW would do a cost estimate and then those funds are required to be taken from the developer and put into a fund that DPW would use to install sidewalks in an area nearby that the anticipated residents of the development might use.
Is there any such area in that district that could benefit from sidewalks?
I don't believe so, given that it's all private roads. And I don't imagine a sidewalk on Parade Road anyway.
How close is this lot to the proposed site, the Wild Trail?
It is not deep into the lot.
No, when near, you'd have to get in a car.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it has to, the money has to stay in that district, though. So you couldn't take it, put it on a Weasbowl or something like that?
It's supposed to be somewhere that could, that you could reasonably anticipate the residents of that development would use.
Okay, fair enough.
Right.
That was the idea behind it.
It has to have some logical nexus.
So, but if we grant a waiver, they don't have to pay it, right?
Correct.
So if we don't grant the waiver, they cannot build the sidewalks, but they have to pony up the money for this, what the sidewalk requires.
But there's no place to put that money in that district.
There's no, none of that, there are no existing sidewalks anywhere in the development, for one thing. And it wouldn't make any sense to like say, well.
You never know what's going to come along in the future. You never know what's going to be developed.
You do have the money from sidewalks.
They might want to put an airfield in someday, too, but.
I would say that it would be unlikely DPW would go into Southdown or anywhere nearby to use those funds because those are all private roads.
Right, right. So this, if they, if they were to, if they were to put up money, where, where could it be used?
Where do you, where would you anticipate those residents would reasonably walk to from that development? Really down Parade Road.
Is there already a recreational easement through there that goes through a wetland zone?
We know how the state likes that.
So I guess I kind of have a recommendation.
So what would?
So where you could reasonably walk to from there?
Well, Elm Street's the closest place.
Who the hell knows the answer to that question?
Well, Elm Street's the closest city street that has sidewalks on it.
Yeah, can you reasonably walk to Elm Street?
There are sidewalks there already.
Huh?
There are sidewalks all the way down Elm Street already.
The whole street?
Yeah, we run there sometimes.
Pretty much.
Some portions there are.
They're not all up standard, but there's sidewalks.
Gone all the way up Elm.
On one side?
Yep. No, you don't have to cross it all. We've gone all the way up and we've done the loop. We've done the loop.
Okay, so just to bring us back on the waiver issue, is there a staff recommendation regarding the waiver issue? Sidewalk waiver.
I guess, after talking it through, it sounds like I have a recommendation.
Are you going to? Are you going to share it with the board?
I don't generally like to recommend that the board grant sidewalk waivers, but I think in this situation, there really is no logical place for anywhere nearby or any anticipated development that it would connect to.
So, we'd be just holding money that we couldn't do anything with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, in this case, you're just granting a waiver, there's no money.
Well, if we don't grant the waiver and they pay up the money, we'd be just holding money that we couldn't do anything with it, is that right?
If you don't grant the waiver, they have to build sidewalks. If you choose to grant the waiver but put the requirement of extracting some money from them, that's option number two.
Well, it's, don't grant the waiver, don't grant the waiver, but give them the option, or grant the waiver. Right.
Grant the waiver, they don't pay. Grant the waiver, make them pay, and we get money that we put somewhere and we're never going to be able to use it, right?
Use it on Elm Street.
No, yeah.
Because it's a small portion of Elm Street.
Well, I don't want to be ridiculous, but I hate granting waivers for sidewalks, but I also don't want to, I don't want to take somebody's money.
I know.
And, you know, play with it in a bag for 20 years, you know?
Okay.
I think the chair agrees with the sentiments expressed by both of these people, but it doesn't make sense to me, just in my opinion, for this developer to have to pay or play. So, any, any other questions for staff?
Yes.
Yep.
Of course, David.
Of course there is.
Of course there is.
We accepted this.
Of course there is. This agreement between MJ Farmer State, who is MJ Farmer State?
That would be me.
That would be?
The applicant.
The applicant.
The applicant.
Yes.
Even though it says MH Estate LLC, that's it, but you're one and the same.
I am, I'm MJ Farmer Estates, I know that.
Okay. And, two, on paragraph six. Seems to contemplate that the planning board's final approval of the site plan application is conditioned on the engineer's peer review of the sewer pump station and MJ Farm Estates LLC agreement to make reasonable changes to the design of the sewer pump station.
Right, I'm with that.
So, if we were to, if we were to approve this, wouldn't we want at least, not just acknowledge the agreement, but wouldn't we want at least to incorporate paragraph six of the agreement in terms of the design of the pump station? Does that make any sense to you?
I don't know about, I don't know, David, because then we're waiting on, to make sure that their third-party review is done before we, you know?
I'll take an answer from anybody.
We've already gotten, started that process in a way, because I've, Mr. McLeod has provided us with the plans and the DES application, and so we've started that process. We anticipate that review, which is in the six to eight hour range. So, we think we'll be able to get the, get back comments to them very quickly and be able to reach, make any changes if there are any, and come to agreement on that.
Okay, so, we give you approval tonight, and something goes south in terms of the peer review, what happens then?
Well, there's, the application hasn't been made to DES, is that correct?
It hasn't been made.
Okay, so, and DES, correct me if I'm wrong, DES also has a peer review on the pump station.
Correct.
Correct, so.
They review the design and the specifications.
So, instead of using the ACME pump, DES may want them to use the Bates manufacturers pump or something. That's going to be the same deal that their engineer is going to come up with. So, there, if there are changes to the pump station, which is a pretty standard design that's been around for, you know, 100 years probably, then, then they're going to be really minor design changes, and we're probably not going to have to come back to the planning board for those anyway.
Is the DES condition in, in this, in this, in this approval?
That's standard, yes.
Yeah.
And also, in paragraph seven of the agreement, says the engineering peer review shall be completed without undue delay. We'll notify the planning board of any changes to the design of the sewer pump station MJ Farm has agreed to make, and if there are no changes, we'll notify the planning board also. So, the agreement anticipates working with the planning board and getting back to them as quickly as we can.
Sounds like the loop is closed, David.
I'm not uncomfortable with what they've said, it's not like I'm saying, oh, no, that's so unreasonable, I can't stand it.
It's just the way you're looking at us.
Which is what I usually do.
But I think the more, I think that, if I can weigh in on your question, I think the staff's recommendation as to conditions more than adequately deals with the pump station design and the fact that DES is also going to approve it, and multiple peer reviews will take place, I think that's.
Well, I just wanted reasonable assurances that this agreement wasn't going south, and that there were other parts of the conditional approval that would sort of trump this agreement in terms of DES approval, and if they're weighing in, and that's a condition of the approval, then, then I'm okay with it.
Right, yeah, DES, essentially DES will have the final say, regardless of what their engineer says, DES will have the final say. I doubt that the, that the engineers are going to disagree, because they, they might ask for, you know, steps be put in or something like that that are not objectionable, but.
Okay, okay.
Or a backup system and power outage. And most of the things in this agreement have been taken care of already, and they're part of the declaration that was submitted for Darwin Terrace?
The homeowners association.
So, most of these things have been incorporated, and ordinarily, they would have to go through the building committee processes, Southdown, we want to try to simplify and streamline it for the applicants, that's why we, we crafted this agreement, that's why we'd like it to be adopted by the board as a condition of its approval.
It's always nice to see lawyers getting along. All right. On that note, are there any other questions for staff? Is staff satisfied with the, how the agreement, just acknowledging that the agreement exists and not making it a condition, that's, that's cool.
I think, I think that's the way to go.
All right. Well, then, if there's nothing else to discuss, I guess the chair would entertain a motion.
I'd recommend that we grant application PL 21, 2018-5-0036-SU and 056-CUP. Oh, no, wait a minute, I'm going to go through the waivers first. I apologize. I'm going to back up. I move that we grant a waiver for the sidewalks due to the circumstances of this particular case and where it's, where this project is taking place.
And that has to be a separate motion, I believe, right?
That's a separate motion.
All right, is there a second to, councillor Bowns's waiver motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, let's ask for a vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. You have the floor again, councillor Bowns.
Yeah, I, I move that we grant a conditional use permit for the temporary impacts to the wetland buffers for directional drilling installation of new sewer force main and gravity sewer. That's it.
A second, Matt.
Okay, and that's, that's subject to the erosion control measures that are shown on the plan, et cetera, right?
That's correct.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any question or any discussion regarding the conditional use permit? Hearing none, let's ask for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
You want an architectural waiver?
You can combine landscaping and architectural together if you'd like.
Yeah.
Say it again?
You can combine landscaping and architectural together if you'd like.
Okay. And I move that we waive the requirements of landscaping and architectural design due to the way that applicant plans to develop this land and sell the lots individually. Those will come up, the landscaping and architectural designs will come up as each individual lot comes in for approval.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, a second.
I have a question.
I was waiting for it to die.
Is, is he correct in saying that as the lots are sold and developed, that they will be subject to architectural review?
They'll be reviewed as part of a building permit, but we won't necessarily apply any particular architectural standards. We will be looking at, we will be.
Southdown has.
So, Southdown will be reviewing each house.
We'll let them do that.
Yes.
We will be looking for the street trees.
Just so the board knows that, that it's really, it's strictly speaking, it doesn't mean they'll be subject to architectural review, certainly not by this board. Okay, are there any other questions? All right. Hearing none, then I'll ask for a vote on the architectural and landscape waivers, all those in favor? Opposed? And that one carries as well. All right, you're on a roll. David, go for it.
I move that we grant a conditional approval to application number PL 2018-5-0036-SU and 0005-CUP on the following conditions. Conditions number one, A through C, D to be amended to completion in Mylar date June 4th, 2020. The rest of the plan as stated, with the exception that condition number five be amended to include paragraph I, the agreement referenced during this discussion and reviewed by the board during this discussion, and that be incorporated into the conditions of approval. And, I think that that does it, unless you.
The conservation commission.
Oh, oh, yes, and, oh, yeah, and the conditions imposed by the conservation commissions by memo dated, what is it?
May 29th, I think.
May 21, 2000?
21, 29.
May 29, 2018.
Thank you.
Four conditions, I believe.
That was a complicated one, thank you.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
I have a question for the maker of the motion. Did you intend that the amendment to section five and the addition of subpart I makes the agreement a part of the condition for approval?
I do.
All right, and that's, so that varies from the staff recommendation, that we merely acknowledge its existence, just so we know, is that intentional?
I don't want, I don't want something to go south, I want it on, on paper and part of the approvals.
So, just so we know, when we're doing the NOA, then, would you want that to have a condition that says, something like the planning board incorporates this agreement as conditions of approval, and then it's attached for reference?
Yeah.
Or do you want it in there? Probably attached, since it's signed, attached for reference.
You can do it either way.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
You can do it however you like, whatever is easiest for you.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, I don't care.
We'll figure it out. I like that, that's spirit, of course. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Any question about it?
May I approach, your honor?
No, I take that back. Going to find you in contempt any moment. Any other discussion? Sensing none, then I would ask for a vote on the approval of this application. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carries, approval has been granted, subject to the conditions set forth, and the staff writing it all up and.
Thank you very much.
Go forth, gentlemen.
Have a good night, it was nice seeing all of you.
Okay, all right, do we lose a quorum if I leave?
Thanks for the sidewalk waiver, too.
I've got to be in Graffin Townes' peer recording.
I've got to go?
I've got to be in Graffin Townes'.
Would we lose a quorum if we let David go?
Negative, no, we would not.
No, we wouldn't.
I don't think there's anything else really controversial on this.
I think the meat of it's been done.
I'm just staying for the good stuff.
Trying to find my agenda, and I know that I've lost it.
Just staying for the good stuff.
Stay for the good stuff.
This is my first time with an iPad, too, I guess, so, all right. Where are we?
We are at.
We are at 80 Davidson. Isn't that what we're doing?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, we are now at PL 2018-0057, conditional use permit regarding wetlands at 80 Davidson Drive, and it is a storage shed on blocks 20 feet in the 50-foot wetland buffer. And could we hear from the applicant on that?
This is just application acceptance?
Oh, they don't show up for that?
There's no speaking.
What would the staff have to say about this?
The staff would like the board to vote to accept the application as complete and schedule the public hearing for July 10th.
Okay, I just have one question. This is essentially, it's a CUP for adding a structure in, within a wetlands buffer, right? Does that have any relationship to the other item on our agenda later in the evening about amending the?
No, that is a different criteria for conditional use permit.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't shooting ourselves in the proverbial foot. Okay, so, that seems to be it, ladies and gentlemen.
Need a motion.
Need a motion, too.
We do need a motion.
Yeah.
To accept this application upon the recommendation of staff. Anyone? Okay, we have a mo, a motion by Yale, a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, I would ask for a vote on the acceptance of this application, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's been accepted, thank you. Okay.
Where is Davidson?
It's in Southdown. Davidson was the name of one of the initial developers, John Davidson, back in the day. So, we're at new business, and item 11.1 was moved up to our surprise.
Your surprise.
My surprise. I didn't sit in that chair very long, did I? Old business, reaffirm the May 3 decision of the planning board to add back, so, if I got this right, at some point, the map was redone and the note was dropped off, or what, what happened?
The zoning ordinance was updated to expand the wetland buffer distances. And when that happened, well, the wetland buffer distances, I think, and to expand it to include named and lettered streams on the map. When that happened, they dropped some language unintentionally regarding intermittent streams.
So, like seasonal wetland type streams, right?
And so, they are, a couple of years ago, the planning board voted to send this forward to city council for vote as a change to the zoning ordinance. For whatever reason, that never made it to, to council. In an effort to move it forward now, the city manager has asked that the planning board just reaffirm that decision to move it forward.
So, if we vote yea, then it's going to go to the city council with our recommendation that the zoning ordinance be amended so as to match the original intent.
Correct.
And we're doing this on the advice of legal, I would imagine, because you, one could also say that a Scrivener's era doesn't change the, the law, you know?
Right.
But, okay.
Right, correct.
Does everyone understand this one?
What happened last time?
There was a lot of discussion, the discussion was reopened.
I don't mean last meeting, I mean, last time we dealt with it.
Why didn't the council do it, you mean?
What happened with it? I thought we approved this.
The planning board did approve sending it to the city council with a recommendation to update the ordinance to include this. That was two years ago, two years ago. For whatever reason, it never went to the city council.
It just fell through the cracks.
Apparently, yes.
That was in a bit of a tumultuous era in the planning department.
What, what was that? I don't get the hand signals. I don't get the hand signals, I'm new to the team.
Apparently, we were, whatever, anyway, so, on, on the advice of legal counsel, because it's been so long, our legal counsel said that the, the planning board should make the recommendation again.
Okay.
So, this came up at the time when we were dealing with what I'll call the disagreements between some members of the planning board and the city council.
Compounded by a very tiny staff.
Right.
Okay.
Like two of us.
So, this just fell through the cracks and it, we don't know, really know why, but on advice of counsel, we gotta do this again.
There's two errors here, the first error was when the ordinance was updated in 2012, I believe it was, the language got dropped.
The language got dropped.
So, there's error number one, and since the city council voted to amend the ordinance with the, the language not there, then that's now the ordinance.
Right, okay.
Excribes error or not, and then, and then in 2016, for whatever reason, it didn't get forwarded to the city council.
So, we're, so we're amending zoning ordinance section 235-17E? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Subpart two.
Subpart two.
Well, I gotta go back to the council and tell them what, what, what's going on, so I better be verse on.
And you might wanna reference the fact that this identical item was indeed approved by the planning board at its Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016 meeting.
How do you know that?
Well, it says it right there, but he might be looking at something else.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm looking at the date, hang on a second.
Yeah, no, you're right. Yeah, yep.
Am, am I allowed to?
Yeah, yeah, good.
I just, you highlighted it and everything, so.
Who was here for that meeting?
Gail?
Yes.
Not Mike.
Mike didn't vote.
That's my vice birthday.
Oh, it says alternate M. Delavecchia did not vote, so.
So, Gail and David.
Okay. So, David dropped the ball, basically, that's, that's good to know.
I, I think it's fair to say, if something bad goes wrong at city hall, it's David's fault, that's okay.
Well, well, you're the city council liaison. What, what does a liaison do other than go to lunch?
He drops the ball, he screws it up, I mean, that, come on.
It's okay, we, we needed a scapegoat, we've got one for the record. All right, so enough of this foolishness, does anyone else wish to have a meaningful discussion about this? Sensing none, I would ask for a motion then. Anybody?
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Michael.
That we reaffirm the May 3rd, 2016 decision of the planning board to add the language of the zoning ordinance, chapter 235-17-E.
Two.
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 Is there a second to this excellent motion?
Charlie seconded.
Is there, Charlie seconded, is there any discussion on this motion? Sensing none, then I would ask for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? There's an abstention, all right. Okay, the motion carries, thank you very much for that. All right.
It's a good thing I stayed around for that, so now that I can talk with misinformation to the council about what happened.
Um, did Kelly tell you?
Right.
So, the applicant for the next.
355 Ways Boulevard?
Yeah, it has, had to leave the meeting for a family reason or personal reason, so.
Mr. Ganon?
If you wanna just continue this to the next meeting or something like that, whatever you wanna do.
We, we have to have the applicant here?
I, I think it would be best for the applicant to give their reasons for requesting the waiver, yes.
Sure, under the circumstances then.
Yeah.
We, we motion to table or to carry over, 'cause it's all business right now, right?
Correct.
So, how about motion to carry over to the next meeting as old business?
Motion to carry over.
All right, so there's a motion, Charlie, you seconded?
No.
No?
I seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and now I think, Mr. St. Clair wants to speak.
Well, I'm just curious, because, you know, I understand, I guess it's nice for the applicant to be here, but I can't remember very well what the applicant said last time about this, you know, asking for that waiver, but he hadn't applied for it, so he was told to just come back, but he gave all the reasons at night. If, if the board wants to be refreshed by the applicant, I get it, but in my mind, I don't, I certainly don't need to be refreshed, but I'm just.
When we see here?
December, yeah, it was.
That was a while ago, wasn't it?
I'm not familiar at all with it, with this.
It's a long time ago.
I would like to be refreshed with it.
Yeah, that's a long time.
I don't know anything about it.
Restaurant that was converted to.
Condos. Yeah, you, 'cause you have.
There's nothing fancy there, his little mini.
Yeah, and I, I know, Brett doesn't know anything about it.
They're gonna have little condos there.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
Call a question.
Generically, I remember it, but other details.
Well, we do have a motion pending to carry this over, and I, and I personally think I'd like to hear from Mr. Ganon on this anyway, so. Is there any other discussion or question? Charlie, you wanna get something else on the record?
Point of order, I called the question.
Question has been called. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
It's good that you asked.
Motion carries.
It's good.
It's good, I'm trying. I wasn't expecting to do this, remember, all right. Well, can we have the report of the planning department, please?
Very briefly, and I hopefully will not be stealing thunder from counselor, but, so when I was giving my budget presentation of the city council last week, the suggestion was made that perhaps, let's see, perhaps the master plan steering committee, which was created last year and helped develop the master plan, should be continued and to help with the implementation of, of some of the various recommendations of the, of the master plan. And the steering committee is made up of three members of the, of the planning board and three members of the city council, and we may have to decide on a, one or maybe two members from the planning board to be on the steering committee going forward, different than what was there before, but I am anticipating the same three city councilors will be on the steering committee. So, the, the question to the board is, do you want me to approach the city council about continuing the steering committee for implementation? Or do you just want staff to come with recommendations and I can touch bases with various members of the city council offline, either way?
Is this the land use, the land use chapter?
Yes.
It's a good thing I stayed, because this was a, um, I won't call it controversial, but it was a way, that steering committee was a way that we kind of opened up communications between the planning board and the city council, which had been rocky at best for some time, considering that the council's liaison to the planning board prior to my getting on the city council had never attended one planning board meeting. So, there was some discussion about amending the zoning ordinance, and there was recommendations that went to the planning board that the planning board rejected over my objection, and as a result of all of that, and you really don't need all the history, we formed this committee to come up with a recommendation with respect to the master plan, which had been ticking around for three or four years, and finally got a land, a vision statement and a land use statement together and adopted by the planning board. Now, with the state, I'll call it the Lakes Region Development Project, the state school property, what's going on in the downtown in terms of the colonial and the sort of ragged zoning in the downtown and the need to address the zoning up on the north, north.
Word one.
Northwest quadrant, yeah. Up along Parade Road and out along Meredith Center Road and where the state school property is, that, that kind of cooperation between the planning board and the city council, I thought was invaluable when we were doing the master plan, because we got it done, and we got it done not now like, you know, not like swiftly, but it took us some time, but we went through it carefully and we, and we came up with recommendations, and now we're gonna have to make recommendations to the, to the zoning, changes to the zoning ordinance, and I don't wanna get caught in a position, when the last time recommendations came from before the council, they were just rejected out of hand. I want there to be a communication between the council and the planning board, I want there to be some semblance of we, we're in this together, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at the best interest of the city of Laconia, we're not doing it individually, so.
So, your recommendation is that, that, that the, the committee continue to set in order to.
That's right.
Facilitate the implementation of the master plan that was adopted at the last meeting?
And I think that that was, so as the liaison from the council, I, that the council would, would also recommend that we, we, we do that.
Okay.
So, it's not just me, it's me and the council.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that, suggestion?
Can do. No, I'm done, yep.
Um, okay, do you need a motion, sir?
No.
I didn't think so.
We just need to committee members, and I hope we reach out to Ruben again and to the folks, I know Mike is no longer.
I saw that there were community members and it was a nice mix. Is Mike Izard the director of the LRPC now?
No, he's not.
Who, who succeeded Kim?
Jeff Hayes.
Oh, okay.
So, he won't be participating in this anymore?
Mike, no.
Yeah.
No, but we have a replacement from LRPC.
So, we've got a replacement for him, we'll have somebody from the planning commission as part of this.
I like their meetings, I used to be on that committee, they have good food.
Oh, are you, are you interested?
Careful what you say.
No, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna suggest.
The food is really good, David.
I'm gonna suggest that we consider, from the planning board, some of the newer members or some of the younger alternate members, you know?
Yep, yeah.
Like Sarah Jenner or, and that we.
That's right, yeah, we have some new appointees.
Get them involved in the process here.
That might, that would make a great idea, that's a great idea, it's a good learning experience.
Brett would be great if you would be willing to do it.
I'll try to get together some information about the responsibilities and the meetings and that kinda stuff and share it.
See, the problem with master plans is that we're required to have them, and they're supposed to be updated, what, every 10 years and, but seven? But, they should be a living document, and, and in theory, they're, they're supposed to guide all decision-making by the city regarding development and, and, and infrastructure and things relating to that. So, I think it's a really good idea to keep this committee rolling, and I would hope that the city council would agree.
Just, just as a little bit of history, when the planning board, and this is the sole province of the planning board, the city council got no vote in it or anything, and just the input we do, but when the planning board adapted, adopted our last master plan, the city council took a look at it, said, "This is worthless and we're not gonna do anything in it," and I, I don't wanna see that happen again. So.
Well, that won't happen again.
So, with that in mind, I'm gonna keep my promise and leave you guys.
So, with great pleasure, the chair notes that David Bounce has left at 9:16 PM with our gratitude. Thank you, David. All right, liaison reports, LRPC?
Um, I don't have a report, but I will certainly be gathering some information to share with our new members in case anyone is interested in serving. Right now, we actually, I am serving because no board members were interested, and we have an open one, but we can happily make two open ones if you're interested.
How many seats does Laconia get?
Um, I believe we get three, and Dean Anson, who's the conservation commission chair, is serving currently.
Okay.
So, if folks, we've got two more, I will happily step down if anyone's.
Yes, we'd be happy to, to give Ms. Loughlin a break on this one.
But I'll gather information as far as, you know, how often the meetings actually are and, and, you know, what's really involved, so you know what you're getting into.
I especially, I, just for those of you that are thinking about it, I was the liaison, I think, or I forget. I was also a member of the executive committee they had, so those meetings was very interesting to see the interplay between what we plan here and like the 10-year transportation plan and the, the big stuff, you know, the, the, the the more politically charged stuff that kinda feeds into it, and I thought that the commission did a really good job at sort of, you know, smoothing the, the waters, so, shall we say. They were constantly, if I remember correctly, being threatened with, you know, towns pulling out and all this other stuff, but hey, at one point, Laconia was going to, I remember that, that was not on our recommendation, that's for sure. All right, thank you, what, what is the next liaison?
Conservation, I don't have an update for that, they're pretty busy with summer coming up, but I can have some information about their upcoming programs next month for you.
Okay, conservation, does that include like surface water, do they do?
They do water quality testing, yep, and they do deep water testing too.
They used to do the discs, if I remember correctly, to see, to check turbidity and.
Um.
You know, they drop these reflective discs into the water and see how far down you can see them. Charlie, it's important stuff.
Get him out there, help him.
I'm a kind of, I'm a real geek about this stuff, so I, I went out on a boat once with, well, that's another story. Okay, thank you, city council, well, he just left. We got his report, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
We did.
Is there any other business before the board this evening?
I don't know if it's the right place to ask this or not, but at the city council meeting, they were talking about normally when there's a new planning board member, you, you get some kinda training from somebody off-site, but now since we have a full board and a lot of new members, that they would be able to bring some kind of training here to us.
Is that through the New Hampshire Municipal Association?
Yeah, we're gonna try to arrange that, not just for this board, but for all the land use boards.
I think it, what about bringing legal in sometime, too?
We, we could do that, I know the municipal association's course covers some of the legal issues.
Who is the, who's, who is the city's, city solicitor these days?
Uh, we have the Mitchell, Mitchell Group.
Yeah, okay, Sam Mitchell, all right.
There's a.
But I would love to sit with you, Brett, anytime that you're available and, and go through, you know, basic planning 101 and, and.
Tomorrow.
The yearly seminar that you can go to is very good.
Working lunch, that's it.
Is there anything in the budget for us to attend off-site trainings, conferences, things like that?
We, we have, we could do it off-site or we can bring them here, but.
No, but I mean like, you know, there's a symposium or a conference.
The municipal association does.
They do like a big conference in the fall, usually.
Planning Association has different things, so there's, there's, there's opportunity to, for various.
Multiple sessions, and some include legal.
So, I think it'd be really cool if we could do some off-site stuff. Oh, that was the other question I had, so. With big projects like we had tonight, do you encourage the board members to go out and do a site visit?
Most, yes, I mean, most, most projects, you can pretty well see what's going on from the road.
Yeah.
Particular site that we were talking about tonight is, is.
Hard to see.
Very hard to get into and very hard to see.
It's invisible.
There's some incredibly steep slopes in the lower development, too.
So, so if you wanted to do that, we, we, I think it would be best to ask. So, so if you wanted to do that, we, 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 I think it would be best to ask the applicant, you know, for permission to do that, just...
I remember, um, going as a board to tour Aqua Vista when it was just a cleared, uh, hill, basically, and, uh, before the tower was built, before anything was really built.
Yep.
The access road was different, um, but I think it really helped us because it, that was a huge development in different phases and different subparts, and, um, it was really important to get the big picture.
Yeah, we certainly could do sight walks if you, if you want to, I, it's been my understanding that previously this board has been reluctant to do that, but...
Well, my, my problem with this, and it's, this is, I gotta put my lawyer hat on, we are a quasi adjudicative board, board, we act like judges, and normally, the rule of due process is we make our decisions based upon the evidence that's before us, we're not supposed to go out looking for evidence. So that's why I'm saying, if we're gonna do sight views, it would be nice if we at least noticed all the members of the planning board and said, "We're gonna go do a site view..."
Oh, absolutely.
"...at this application," so that the, later, somebody wouldn't object to, "Well, what was he doing walking around there, you know, um, on this property, he shouldn't have been looking at that stuff," whatever.
Yeah, I would say it would be best to do it in an organized manner.
Okay.
And we have in the past, gone to different sites.
That's good. Yeah.
As a group.
But if, but if somebody can't make it at the same time as a group, there's still a way to get around that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, someday I want to sit down, talk with you, what the hell's going on in my neighborhood.
Okay.
And I think, I think, um, most folks know this, but for the new folks, um, come, come through us to facilitate that meeting.
Yeah.
You, you aren't supposed to be talking to each other, uh, really outside of the meeting, 'cause if, you could end up in a quorum, which would technically be a meeting, so just make sure you talk to us and we'll arrange it with the other board members.
And technically speaking, you shouldn't be talking to the applicants either, because that would be an ex parte communication. They're, they're, they're supposed to talk to us through this forum, uh, and, and notice has to be given to everybody, so private conversations wouldn't be good.
And that's the kind of thing that would be covered with the training when we, when we do get them to come.
Right, right, it's the basic stuff, but I'm excited, it's a new board and, um, you know, I missed it. I, I really did, I was one of the geeks that would open the plans up and ask about catch basins, so, and I see by the minutes that a lot of the same people like Mr. O'Kane, Steve Smith are still doing it.
Yeah.
And, uh, and the, those people, you know, they have a reputation for integrity and you can trust them, and that makes our job so much easier, and yours as well, so, thank you for your efforts. So, okay, is there anything else under other business, monkey or otherwise? All right, and I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion?